Monday, September 14th. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-415-655-0001, then dial the meeting room access code 1331332484, or through the virtual WebEx meeting, the link is available on the Wassa Schools District homepage. In the event a passcode is needed to enter the virtual meeting, it is 1234. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email CPAC@WASSASCHOOLS.org with "public comment" in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the board president. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the board meeting through the following means. Wassa School District meetings are streamed live on YouTube. Viewers may visit the site by searching for "Wassa School Board YouTube," or through a link www.tinyurl.com/wsbmeetings. Wassa School Board meetings can also be found on VIE BIT, the following Thursday at the following link.
That's a long one.
Yeah, that's a long one. I'm sorry, everybody who's not going to list that. If you have a specific question on that link, please email clerk Peck, CPAC@WASSASCHOOLS.org, requesting that link. All meetings will also be cable-passed on Charter/Spectrum Channel 981 at the following times: Mondays at 12:00 p.m., Wednesdays at 8:00 a.m., Saturdays at 6:00 p.m. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. Finally, for those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact the deputy clerk, Cassie Peck, at 715-261-0505, or CPAC@WASSASCHOOLS.org. Okay, with that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call. All right, Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Kyle Lo?
Here.
Beth Martin?
Present.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Stralup?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, so we are moving to Agenda Item Four, Reading of the Mission Statement. It is the mission of the Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Agenda Item Five, we have public and student comment. So tonight, we have a few individuals who will be providing comment in person. We have five individuals signed up for that. We also have public comment that was submitted to clerk Peck. So I think what we'll do is we'll do the in-person public comment first, and I'm just going to review the policy. This is Policy 167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings. So we have, there are some rules as it relates to public comment. Let's see here. So public comment will be limited to five minutes in duration. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic at the same meeting. We have accepted public comment by email as well as in-person here, and there is some overlap, but I think that we can suspend the rule on that, given the unique situations for tonight's public comment. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk if anything they say during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. The presiding officer values civil discourse and may interrupt or terminate a speaker's comments when the statement is too lengthy, disruptive, disorderly, threatening, or obscene. A couple of other comments here. Public comment shall be limited to 30 minutes. After the in-person public comment is concluded, then I will go through the email public comment and identify the subject matter of the comment and the name of the person submitting the comment, and then clerk Peck will redact those public comments submitted by email, removing emails and any personal information, and then that will be posted on the district website. Where the agenda materials are today, it'll be a separate link that says Extras, and people will be able to see that public comment. As a reminder, whether public comment is in person or by email, the board accepts that public comment and listens to it, but there isn't engaging in dialogue. So we'll go in order of the individuals that, in the order that they've listed, and the first will be John Kreischer.
All right, thank you, board members. Since the start of this pandemic, it has been a series of moving goalposts. First, flatten the curve. Next, don't overwhelm the hospital. And now it's about cases, all while death rates continue to decline. The hospitals in this region were never overwhelmed, not even close. Not a single child was admitted into the hospital because of COVID. The point being, COVID is not what will harm our children. What we're doing by not getting our children back to school has and will continue to cause more harm than the virus ever could. Teachers are essential, just like doctors, nurses, first responders, manufacturing, retail. It's time our teachers go back to work in a setting where kids can flourish academically. I speak on behalf of thousands of parents and students, many of whom are not allowed to speak or are too afraid. Please provide families a choice. Plan B will increase the opportunity for spreading the transmission of the virus, and it will also increase the difficulty of the teacher's job exponentially. Teachers are being silenced. I know many teachers, some of which have reached out to me personally, provided me their input and feedback, some of which have asked me not to share their feedback for fear they will be found out. This ostracization and retribution that they're afraid of should be a concern to all. This is not the type of culture that should exist in a school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreischer. Mr. Kreischer, it was my error, I didn't see that you had taken a seat already, to, could you state your address also?
Address?
Mm-hmm.
151008 Juniper Lane, Wassa.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will have April Van Rixel. Ms. Van Rixel, clerk Peck will be holding up markers at 2 minutes and 30 seconds and at 30 seconds. If you could state your name and your address, please.
Can I take the mask off, or do I wear it? April Van Rixel, 227531 Boulder Ridge Circle, Wassa, Wisconsin, 5401. So first of all, thank you guys all for listening to public comment, for allowing us to be here. I did want to personally thank you for that. And I don't have something that I wrote up, because this was a little last minute for myself, but I did have something that was written by one of the members of the community, and I really wanted to read that for you today. She will remain anonymous, because she asked me not to release her name. So before I was a nurse, I dreamed of being a mom. When I became a nurse, I chose to specialize in bringing babies into the world and still couldn't wait to be a mom. There were days I helped put babies into the car seat at discharge and smiled with excitement for their families, and there were days I hold back tears, wishing I could take them home with me. For some, for some families, babies were a blessing and for some, a burden. Some I knew would be loved and some I worried would not be. This doesn't, this, this doesn't always change as they grow up. Without these, the power of empathy lives in a nurse, providers, and teacher souls. Without these professions, our country and children will suffer. I have worked with many colleagues who I trust to be a voice and an advocate for so many, including my own children and teachers alike. It is our duty to be a voice in these professions and be trusted and listened by the community. Now, I am a parent of three school-aged children, and after working in the hospital and clinic, have chosen to work from home. My husband is a lineman, you could say he has an essential job, and a dangerous one at that. I am now the work-from-home mama-nurse educator of three since March. It continues as though, it seems as though this will continue in our district whilst every surrounding district has options. If I feel overwhelmed, I'm asking you all just to imagine these true scenarios in our district, or potential scenarios. Number one, the Spanish-speaking family in rural Wassa who doesn't have any communication, and they don't have internet or can't facilitate virtual learning. They just learned about all of this today. The household with two working parents that leave their fifth grader home with baby brother under one year, because in their culture and circumstances, it is the only affordable option. Baby brother cries all day and virtual learning is impossible. He has nightmares because he can't complete his work. Three, the children who don't log in on their Chromebook but all, but log into social media all day. She goes missing or turns to drugs or an eating disorder to cope with online bullying. Her parents work. Number four, the only child who gets their meals, the child who only gets their meals at school, maybe mom or dad are never around or struggling with addiction. The child who is home with dad. The child who is home with physical, emotional, or sexual abuse all day. Their teacher is in school where they're saving grades. Without school, they lose hope and miss out on opportunities to be helped. The single parent who needs to work and is without childcare. She is forced to choose between work and providing for her family or staying home. They struggle. The child with a disability or barrier of any kind that counts on one, two, or three specialists of teachers who are trained, patient, and understand their needs by in-person assessment. The anxious child who can't shut it off because they feel as though maybe they're missing something or they are unsure if they are good enough. The in-person validation and encouragement of their teachers goes a long way. They fall behind. The child that gets continuously bullied by their older sister while their parents work, they feel like they have nobody and spiral into depression and become suicidal because it is all just too much. The child who needs to be challenged on a daily basis loses interest in online learning and they give up. We as parents cannot give up. The children need us more than ever right now. Their mental, physical, and social well-being is at stake. This weighs heavy on my heart, as well as the heart of the community, as you can see, and the selfish master plans are failing our youth. This isn't acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Charles Berger.
Yes.
I apologize. So you'll have five minutes.
Okay.
Clerk Peck will hold up at 2 minutes and 30 seconds and at 30 seconds to allow you to know what the time is. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Berger. I live at 22361 Magnolia Avenue in Wassa, Rhode Island. Anything else you need to do? Okay, two, let me check.
There you go. Thank you.
Well, I would like to thank all board members and, of course, the superintendent, both physical and virtual, for coming today. I know that you've had a lot of discussion regarding Plans A, B, and C, and I know it's not been an easy one at times. There's been a lot to consider. I know that today you're going to consider the options and looking at possibly moving from C to B or A, and, you know, I know that these were discussed much, much earlier in the summer, and when you did, let's be honest, when you planned for this, there were no shortages in the IT supply chain. Webcams were easy to get. I myself in enterprise data storage, we saw our own lead times go from three weeks to over eight. Our customers are suffering, we can't get the components, so I understand the shortages that the school districts facing. My idea, which is one I think that you could easily discuss tonight, is one of compromise. I'd like the school board to consider, on behalf of not only the students but the faculty, since the guidelines of the CDC show that children in our age group were actually about 20 times less likely to get ill to the point of hospitalization and needing any type of specialized care than any adult. I think that there's a possibility that we cannot possibly make what we already have in stock at the Wassa School District work. I know that in earlier discussions, you'd said we had about half the webcams in, right? With the other half coming somewhere later in October. Why don't we make a modified plan and take half of the necessary webcams that we do have and allow for a full rollout of Plan B with allocating the resources in a different way? Could we consider, and could you discuss, allowing kindergarten through eighth back Bring them back with masks, full sanitization, protecting of the teachers, protecting them from themselves, and a full five-day work week, or five-day school week. Allocate all the available and purchased webcams to the area high schools. We know that many of the schools, the school-aged children, as they do get older, are able to have better time management. They're able to go and cope with things, they're able to adapt to the technology, work the laptops, but I'm not trying to say that high schoolers have to come back. I've heard from many in the community saying, "Well, I come from a high-risk family." I'm not saying that they have to come back. I'm saying, let's make it easier for the ones that are at the very, very low risk to be able to find a way back so they can get the education they need. Let's compromise on the fact that all teachers have gone shopping to the area stores, both teachers from Newman, Everest, Wassa East, Wassa West, we've all gone to those stores, and we face greater risk in touching those handles and going through those stores than we would ever touching our own dry erase markers and going and giving an instruction with kids with masks. For those that do not wish to return to a full in-person learning, they still have the virtual capability, still have the webcams. For those students that still say, "I'm at high risk," we're not forcing them. I'm not asking them to come back. I'm not asking you to force them to come back. I still want them to have the choice. Let's find a compromise to get the children who have special needs back into school and allow the families of first responders who are even just 500 yards away from your building to not have to carry the burden of not only protecting us in their fire trucks and their ambulances, but also look at the community and looking at the point that they have to find care for their children at home as they are deemed essential, but right now, due to the, I know the shortages aren't of anyone's fault, but their kids in a way are being deemed as nonessential, and that's a challenge. We need to go and erase that burden, we need to ease that program. These EMTs, these first responders, the doctors at the, at the different various clinics are not asking for free daycare, as I said. Many people have said that, "Oh, that's all they want." This is about education and their kids falling behind. I'm not officious, but as John has spoke earlier and I have said many times, I can use the logic and facts of many of the medical experts that we've got in the world today to see that there is a way for the Wassa School District to achieve the educational goals laid out in the mission statement, read earlier, and provide a safe in-person rollout without jeopardizing the safety of students or faculty. A way that the Wassa School District can use the tools available and currently in-hand, that you already have these webcams in hand, to ensure that our kids are not left behind. Other districts have developed plans, okay? Other districts have developed plans and shown that it can be done. All I ask is that the board to discuss and consider the opportunity, because as I sit in front of those in-person and virtual, you can't sit there and tell me that every other board is better than this one, that every other group of teachers has thought of the plan, but we're not able to. For if we really have not thought and been able to found a solution with the talent that we have in this room and online, both in our teachers, we need to reconsider what we're doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Vandenberg, or Mrs. Vandenberg, rather, you have five minutes. Clerk Peck will hold up the time for you at 2 minutes and 30, and also at 30 seconds to allow you, and she'll also hold it up at time. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then you may begin.
Karen Vandenberg, 508 South 52nd Avenue, Wassa. Dr. Hiltz and school members, present and virtually. First, I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak. Publicly, the interview emails and digital communication is incredibly limited. I feel like to convey the heart behind our concerns. I want to introduce myself on behalf of my family. Again, I'm Karen Vandenberg, and my husband and I are both healthcare providers in this community and the parents of four children that we've raised in this district. We love this district. We love the teachers and administrators who have provided an excellent education. We believe it's critical first and foremost to express that we deeply care about the needs of the children and family and staff and community who are medically vulnerable and at high risk for contracting COVID-19. I've dedicated my entire career to working with the most medically vulnerable among us. My husband and I have continued to work day in and day out in a world with COVID-19. We have gladly taken on added precautions, increased our workloads, and sacrificed at our own personal risk for the sake of our patients. We believe it's of critical importance that the medically vulnerable are cared for, protected, and educated, and we're grateful. We're really grateful that our district has an option in place in order to be protective for those children and families and staff through a virtual option. But please try to understand and try to emphasize that most families and their children are now at greater risk with a virtual-only decision, without any option of protection or perception of being cared for at all. To suggest that a virtual-only school option is the safe and protective decision of our children, the students of Wassa, is not true. It unequivocally is not true. There have been absolutely zero deaths by COVID-19 of anyone under the age of 20 in the entire state of Wisconsin since it began, but what has continued and increased at alarming rates in our children since the school shut down is their mental health decline, their increased deaths by suicide and drug overdose, and untold numbers of incidents of physical abuse, sexual abuse, and neglect that goes unreported without teachers and safe adults in their lives. The numbers are devastating. Children are actually being abused, self-harming, and dying because the school doors are closed. Those will be the consequences of your delay to open our schools. Even the director of the CDC has declared students are at far greater health risk of suicide, drug overdose, and the flu than of COVID-19, and is urging the schools to reopen. Again, for those who fall in a vulnerable category, they have every right to arrive at home in a virtual learning format, and we would encourage them to do so. But your decision to keep your school doors closed is not only not protective of the majority of the students in this district, it is also a decision that exacerbates privilege. Research shows that every child will suffer without in-person instruction, but those who will suffer the most will be children with special needs, children from low-income families, children from single-parent homes and minority families, and second-language-speaking families, essential working families, homeless children, and children in unsafe home environments. Every family who's uncomfortable with in-person learning has a choice, but the families who have students now suffering with major mental health issues, of which we personally know several, they have no options. Every family with special ed students not receiving their IDP accommodations that are required by law to be met has no options. Every essential working family who are stocking shelves so that you can buy groceries and fighting fires and protecting our community and caring for your loved ones in hospitals and nursing homes, they don't have the luxury of working from home, and their children are fending for themselves, and they have no options. Every second-language-speaking home with students struggling to learn a new language while managing technology and trying to get an education without English speakers in their home to help them, they have no options. Every child in an unsafe, abusive home is unseen, unheard, and unnoticed by their teachers or other safe adults, and they have no options. We really believe it's time for you to consider every one of those students and families. We can do this, and we're pleading with you to open our schools.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Vandenberg. And next, we have Joyce Kluck. Hello, Ms. Kluck. Clerk Peck will indicate for you time. You'll have five minutes. She'll show you at 2 minutes, 30 seconds, 30 seconds in time, but like I said, you have five minutes, and if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. My name is Joyce Kluck, and my address is 518 East Union Ave in the city of Wassa. And I am here today, and I want to first start by thanking you all for listening to some parents. It's extremely valuable information that you're getting. I don't have a script. I don't like talking in front of people. I'm extremely nervous in this room. There's a camera, and there's all of you. I have, I have no script at all, but what I wanted to say is my son has special needs and has been ignored by his particular school, not the school district, that he has special needs. I am fighting to get him an IDP right now, or at least a 504. With that put aside, my, my son has ADHD since the age of four, and my son also has a condition called PANDAS, P-A-N-D-A-S. Most of you have never heard of it, but it's a complication from undiagnosed strep, and it causes swelling in the brain, and it affects the emotional behavior of a child. My son has been on ADHD medication and antidepressants for years. I would say he's 11 at this point, he's a fifth grader, I would say since he's been in about second or third grade. My son has been so distraught over the fact that he's going to be virtual learning. My husband and I were out running an errand, he was home with my older daughter, and I got a text message from my son that said, "Mom, I want to kill myself." He has never, ever said that to me ever before. I've never heard those words out of his mouth. I was driving, my husband called, my husband FaceTimed him so we could see him, make sure he was safe, and we went right home, and he was sad because we had just told him that he was not going to be able to go back to school for virtual learning. I mean, go back to school for in-person learning. He didn't even know what virtual meant. Second of all, last week, due to technical difficulties, on Tuesday, my son was not able to participate in school at all because of technical difficulties, and I had put up two calls into IT. I got a phone call Tuesday morning around, well, around noon from IT. We got things fixed. Now, I have a son that's so worked up about school and so saddened by being virtual, and then I tried to put him into virtual for the second half of the day after lunch. He proceeded to spin himself into a crying fit. He was sweating, he was shaking, the veins in his neck were popping out of his head. I was home alone, my husband was not home, and he continued to work himself up, so I was just there hugging him at that point. He proceeded to try and gouge his eyeballs out of his head, and I was stopping him with my hands, okay? I've never had this happen with my son before, and I was home alone, and I was very scared. He then proceeded to try and rip his hair out of his head, which he was able to get some hair out, okay? I was home alone with my son, I wasn't sure what to do. He sees a psychiatrist faithfully, he has for years, and I recognize we have a chemical instability here as well as the pressure of virtual learning. What my son said to his psychiatrist on Friday morning when we were able to get him in on a cancellation is that he believed he was going to be in virtual learning for the rest of his life in school, and we had to assure him that that was not the case, that was not going to happen to him. But my son with his, I call them special needs- But my son with his, I call them special needs, and with this virtual school, it has had a tremendous negative impact on his mental health beyond words that I could possibly even sit here and describe. And I'm just here to talk from my heart to let you know, from the mother, and my son's lucky. I'm a nurse. My husband's a disabled paramedic firefighter. We love him and we care for him. He sees a psychiatrist regularly. He gets the care he needs. But what about these kids out there in our community that have these needs that don't have that support at home? I'm telling you, they're out there and I'm telling you, they're being affected by virtual learning. All the school districts around us, as you know, but the other thing that I found quite fascinating, and I don't know why we're so isolated, I have family in Chicago and I was down there for a funeral in August and I took a survey. My nephew is an educator in the Chicago School District. Every single one of my family members, every family, and I have a huge family, every single one of them were either all in person or partially in person, like a hybrid type thing. I am begging the school board, I am begging with my heart to please consider going to school five days a week. That is what our kids need and that's what I'm asking you to please consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kluck. Could we get a registration? Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Tao, you have five minutes. Clerk Peck will indicate to you at two minutes, thirty seconds, thirty seconds in time. And if you will state your name and address for the record and then you have five minutes.
Thank you, Board President Tricia Zomker. My name is Mary Tao, 506 Sherman Street, Wausau, Wisconsin, 54401. I'm here tonight not on behalf of the Wausau School District referendum, but I'm here tonight on behalf of all the parents that are outside, parents like myself who have been dying to have public comment and have dialogue with all of you, which is long overdue. I want to share that I used to feel honored and privileged to be a school board member when I served in 2016 and 2019, sitting in the very seats that all of you are sitting at now. And I remember that, you know, we always do our best, right? We're all good people. I believe all of you are great people. And you're working with all the information that you have in front of you to try to do what's best for all the students in our school district. I truly believe that. But I think that in the last several months, I think we've lost some of that. You know, we've lost the opportunity to be able to come here, to have public comment, to assemble, and to really share with you, all of you, you know, how we feel about the decisions that all of you are making that are impacting our lives and our children's lives. You know, I'm a mom. All of you know that I stepped down from the political arena because my son has ADHD. My son has a 504 plan. My son can't write. So every day of my life since the first week of school has been contacting his counselor, John Muir, every single day about a broken Chromebook, about not being able to log in, about how my son's going to be able to communicate and type and write with all his teachers and being able to focus. It's really hard when he's at home and I'm also a professional. I work from home. My husband works from home. And maybe we're more privileged than other families in our community. And I want to quote and share facts that seventeen percent of your community live under poverty federal guideline, under federal poverty levels. That means that six thousand of your thirty-eight thousand population in the city of Wausau are poor. And I can't imagine that I have to serve as a parent, a technology expert, a teacher. I just want you all of you to be able to give our students and our parents a choice. I'm not asking you to go Plan A, B, or C. I'm saying give the parents and the students an opportunity to be able to choose what they want. And I hope that tonight, when you think about all those children that may not have the possibilities like my children do, that you know that you're going to think about them. And then when you make your decisions tonight and when you have discourse and you have dialogue about reopening and what the next steps would be, I hope that you consider all the comments and all the emails, the petition, the people who've talked to all of you, you know, the Department of Health, you know, other, you know, experts that have given you guys information. But don't forget the little boys like my son Christopher Wang, who continue to struggle, or the mom parents who have contacted me. Maybe they didn't contact Kyle Lo, but you know what? They keep calling me. Because as a mom woman who leads her community, you know what? Parents look to me for answers. And you know what? I don't have any answers for them. But to say, "Keep shuffling your kids around among parents or aunts and uncles or grandparents." And then you have grandparents who don't speak English. And on top of that, they don't even know how to use technology. So now our children continue to fall behind in instruction. So I ask all of you respectfully, you know, think about all the lives that are being impacted right now, you know, and do what you can with all the information that's in front of you, listen to parents, and give us some options because what we have right now isn't working. And I hope that all of you dig deep. Despite the things I've said about each and every single one of you, despite what I've said about the referendum, tonight, I'm not here to speak about that. I'm speaking to you as parents and as professionals to give these parents and these kids some options. And thank you so much for giving me the time to speak tonight, the full five minutes to you. Thank you, Cassie, and thank you to the board members. I hope you continue your discussion and I hope that you come out, you know, giving us some opportunities to have choices for the Wausau School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tao. Okay, so we do have some, oh, sorry. Okay, so at this point, we're still on public comment. And I'm going to now state the public comments of those that came in by email. As a reminder, all of these public comments will be publicly posted so individuals can read the public comments in full, save for the information that will be redacted such as emails and private information. Okay, first of all, we have received some public comment regarding reopening. And these might vary between Plans B and A. A, of course, is back in school five days a week. So here first, we have public comment from Marsha Schultz urging school reopening five days a week. Public comment from Amy Scribner urging reopening, giving the parents option of virtual or in-person. And I should say building reopening. All right, third public comment from Angela Quince. And this is urging moving from virtual opening to in-person. Submitted as a parent with some commentary on how that was going. Public comment from Kristen Rousch. And this is requesting return to in-person classes. Public comment from Jessica Tippel. Public comment, this is urging moving to implementation of Plan A, at least for elementary children, she says. Public comment from Shannon Ravine urging to have elementary fully in-person at a minimum and reevaluating Plan B to each individual school. Public comment from Derek and Christie Boyd urging to switch to in-person five days a week for all grade levels. Public comment from Amanda Paulson. So this is urging reopening schools, the buildings, I should say. Public comment from John Kreischer. This continues, this is urging, urging reopening the buildings. This is another public comment from John Kreischer. Next day. And this continues to be urging reopening along with some anonymous letters that he included and sent to the board. Public comment from Jamie Hoover urging, more so questioning the safety of sending kids to school, but it appears to be urging reopening. And we received, she sent four, a couple of those at the same night. Looks like we have four from Jamie Hoover within ten twenty, ten thirty-three to ten thirty-seven of the same night, all against the school year being virtual and urging reopening. Public comment from Jessie Skutowski. Sharing experience as a parent and concern in virtual learning is not working for this family urging to physically reopen. Public comment from Steve and Karen Vanderberg urging reopening all the way, this is to Plan A. Public comment again from Steve and Karen Vandenberg. So yeah, there's several from Steve and Karen Vandenberg, but all ultimately sharing experience and urging physically reopening the buildings. Another comment from Kristen Rousch, who's already submitted public comment on this as well tonight, but just urging reopening the buildings. Another public comment from John Kreischer, which continues to urge reopening, not in support of Plan B, urging Plan A fully in the building five days a week. Public comment from Jennifer Ast and requesting that at least elementary students are sent back full-time in-person and not in support of Plan B, at least for elementary. Public comment from Sarah Real. Not in support of the virtual learning. And sharing experience as a parent has been difficult. And last in this group is an anonymous public comment urging moving from virtual learning to being back in the building. Okay, so that's those. All right, so now I am opening a new folder, which is approximately seventy-four comments in support. So there's, I'm about to read seventy-four in this category, everybody, in support of remaining virtual. All right, so we have an anonymous, starting with anonymous, support of virtual, but the reason I'd like to keep it anonymous is because of emotions on all sides. We have an email, a public comment from Carol Pond urging to continue with virtual learning. We have a comment from Elena Eric, who is urging to continue with virtual learning. Comment from Jean Barron, who is requesting continued virtual instruction and supports mask policy, which is also on the agenda tonight. Public comment from Kelly Rur. And this is urging continued virtual learning. Anonymous public comment from a school counselor in the district, but supports continual virtual learning. Public comment from Anna Katesh, supports virtual learning, yeah, continued support of virtual learning. Public comment from Deb Kirsch, continued support of virtual learning. Public comment from Heidi Pete, support to continue with virtual learning. Anonymous comment, continued support of virtual learning. Comment from Megan Richardson, continued support of virtual learning. Comment from Mary Lucarelli, continued support of virtual learning. Comment from Jamie Grace, continued support of virtual learning. Comment from Henry Leonard, continued support of virtual learning. This is, this is more focused on, focusing on facts, studying the facts carefully as part of decision-making than it says those exact words that I just said. Public comment from Deb Alby, continued support of virtual learning. Public comment from Dr. Jason Chan. First, he's concerned about face shields. They are not considered a replacement for face masks, so he shares some concerns on that. Also concerns regarding the high level of COVID in the community and shares anecdotal evidence of a good start to the school year that he's acknowledged as a parent. I'm sorry, observed as a parent. All right, public comment from Tom McGrath, support of virtual learning and continuing, urging continuing with Plan C. Public comment from Kristen Rock, oh, Kirsten Rock rather, urging staying virtual, sharing some concerns of some, of what the fifty-fifty Plan B model would look like. Public comment from Jordan Sisson urging to continue with virtual learning at this time. Public comment from Carrie Van den Elzen, supporting the start of the year and urging to continue with Plan C virtual learning. Public comment from Monica Borison urging continuing virtual learning at this time. Public comment from Tim and Pam Bannister, support for the decision to start virtually and encouraging to continue until there's better management of the virus. Public comment from Jody Krieg, support for virtual learning, staying with virtual learning. We have an anonymous comment that supports the start of the virtual year and urges continuation and fully supports the mask mandate. Public comment from Megan Malloy. This is support for the decision to start the year virtually. Public comment from Captain Christopher Zalinski, sorry if I have mispronounced that. Captain Christopher Zelinski, sorry if I have mispronounced that. Um, this is, uh, kind of discussing coronavirus and giving some, a lengthy discussion of that and urges, um, shares some thoughts on that as far as, uh, taking it into account in deciding how to continue the modality of operation. Anonymous public comment. Supports virtual learning. Public comment from Caitlin Leininger, parent in the district. Um, support for starting and continuing virtual learning. Public comment from Laura Lawler. Uh, thanking the board for starting the year virtually and, um, urges continued virtual learning. Anonymous public comment from a parent in the district. Um, who is grateful for starting the year virtual and urging continued virtual learning. This is, I think this is a repeat. Uh, public comment from Adrian Lewis Grave Made. Um, support for virtual learning. Public comment from Jennifer and Mark Johnson, supporting virtual learning. Anonymous public comment, uh, requesting continuing to, with Plan C and requesting approval of proposed mask policy. Public comment from Christine Thon Little, Little and James Tesmer. Um, support for virtual learning and urging continuation with virtual learning. Public comment from Anonymous, um, supporting virtual learning start to this school year and urging continuing with it. Public comment from Lori Olhoff. Supporting, uh, virtual start and urging continue with, continuing virtual start under Plan C. Public comment from Kathy Schneck. Um, urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Pat Murphy, urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Dave and Brenda Sunby and family, urging virtual learning. Public comment from Anonymous. Urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Anonymous. Urging virtual learning. Public comment from Jay Caldwell. Urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Heather Collins. Supporting the decision to start the year virtually, supporting mask policy. Public comment from Anonymous. Urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Anonymous urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Anonymous. Uh, urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from, uh, Anna Cliver is providing a student perspective. Urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Patricia Thornwell. Urging ver- continued virtual learning. Public comment from Andrew Lynch, earning, urging virtual learning. Public comment from Teresa John and family, Laughlin family. Or, uh, support for virtual learning. Public comment from Robert Gradzieluski urging virtual learning, continuing with virtual learning. Public comment from Dan Brhoda urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from, um, let's see, it doesn't ask to, uh, stay anonymous, but I can't tell, it's Joanie. Um, it's unclear, but urging virtual learning for at least the first semester. Public comment from Joel Lewis. Urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Chu Wijang urging virtual learning. Public comment from, uh, I mean, anonymous comment. Uh, urging continued virtual learning. Public comment also requests to stay anonymous urging virtual learning. Public comment from Kim Scherter urging, um, virtual learning. Anonymous public comment urging continued virtual learning. Anonymous public comment urging continue virtual learning. Public comment from Joby Marsh urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Brittany Zirton urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Eric Anderson urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from April Gradzieluski. Thankful for the start of the school year and urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Beth Dimka urging continued virtual learning. Public comment from Marjorie Bach. Uh, continued virtual learning. Public comment from Jerry Renardi. Uh, support for starting the school year virtually. Public comment from John Mossens. This, um, uh, asking to, to, uh, listen to science as a source of decision-making as it relates to modality of instruction. Anonymous public comment. In support of continued virtual learning. Another anonymous public comment in support of continued virtual learning. Public comment from Sarah Steltzer. Uh, requesting to continue with virtual learning. Public comment from Paul Dimka. Uh, urging continued virtual learning and supporting, uh, the masking policy. And public comment from Patricia Nelson. Um, this is, uh, a number of questions, but ultimately it's, um, saying to focus on science and medical advice before moving to a hybrid plan. Okay, just a couple more public comments. Almost, just a few more here. All right. Okay, so we have just a, a handful of other public comments, starting with Melissa and Robin Plaid. Um, there's, this is a, a, a public comment that has, um, some different questions. Um, asking to consider an alternative approach to Plan B. Um, just asking some, what some things might look like and proposing alternatives to the current Plan B. Public comment from Lonnie Corpeta. Um, this is related to, uh, the referendum. And, uh, public comment about virtual learning's impact on the referendum. Public comment from Laura LaFonte asking, or at least stating that it should be on every single meeting to address the, um, modality of instruction. Not, uh, public comment from Jennifer Nelson. Um, this is regarding, um, code of ethics violations by board members. Sites, uh, a couple of board member names and, um, includes some screenshots. Um, I will not be accepting these screenshots for a public comment, um, because of First Amendment rights of board members. Uh, but that public comment can be used, but not the screenshots. Um, and finally, Gail Marshall, public comment. Uh, this is just a re- a comment about in-person public comment and, uh, questioning the public comment policy of the Wassa Board of Education. Okay, so, for, uh, as a reminder, all of those public comments will be redacted and posted publicly on the school district website where you find the agenda. It's going to be that same location under extras. Um, it's, it might take a day or two until the information is redacted. Okay, I feel like we had a full meeting. Okay, so, next on the agenda, we are, oh, we're at Agenda Item Six. Approving the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, Clark Peck, were there any donations to the district this month?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, they are listed on Board Book, but I forgot to list them in your script.
Okay, so, um, okay, so I don't have that right now.
I can pull it up just one moment. Would you like me to read them out?
Yes, so, um, before I seek a motion, I'm going to ask that Clark Peck read the donations to the district for the month.
All right, Burns Post Number Three Eighty-Eight Veterans of Foreign Wars of the U.S. An anonymous donation. Delta Dental Foundation. Covantage Cares. Highland Community Church. QuickTrip. Northwest Tool. The Wassa School Foundation. The Wassa, the Wassa School Foundation, the Wassa School Foundation. John and Jennifer Ray Beckham. UMR, UMR. The United Healthcare Systems, Inc. Wassa West Boys Basketball Boosters. Wassa West Warrior Highs Hockey Booster Club. Wassa West Warrior Hockey Booster Club. And that is it.
Okay, thank you, Clark Peck. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district.
Okay, I see Lance Trollop is number one.
Okay, we have a first from Lance Trollop and a second from Beth Martin.
All right, Jim Boucher.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Calo.
Yes.
Beth Martin.
Yes.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Jane Roche.
Yes.
Lance Trollop.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Tricia Sankar.
Yes.
Eight-zero, that passed.
Okay, the motion passed eight-zero. Next, we are going to move to Agenda Item Seven A One. This is the Project Relaunch Update. This is a possible action item. Dr. Hill.
Make sure I remember all the things. There we go, all right. Uh, all right, thank you, Cassie, for bringing the, uh, the motion up. So, um, thanks, everybody. As we can see, there are a number of views with legitimate points. We've been struggling with this for, for months. Um, and so before we, uh, talk about the motion, I just want to, uh, remind everybody that the work to develop Project Relaunch involved hundreds of staff members, uh, who worked on this for, for months, you know, reviewing all the pertinent data. And we certainly know that things change over time. Um, but I just want to remind people that there was a lot of effort and expertise, uh, brought into the development of this plan and the, and the three options. Um, I know what's of, of most interest to people is,
Keith, Keith, you're muted.
I'm muted?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see because I was sharing.
Hello, everyone, apparently I was muted. So, we'll start over. Um, I, all I was saying was that I wanted to remind everyone that, uh, Project Relaunch and the three options, uh, Plans A, B, and C, um, that were developed, those were developed by hundreds of staff members over a number of weeks. Um, and they had all of the, the pertinent data and research available to them. Many, many options were considered. Um, and the ones that were brought forward, uh, were those that were deemed most viable. Tonight, we're going to, in addition to our, our own internal team, uh, we are very thankful to have, uh, four guests with us from the Marathon County Health Department. Uh, John Toyer, Amanda Ostrowski, Jenny Sue, and Eileen Eckhart. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping a little later, we can get some, uh, some expert commentary, um, uh, on, on some, on some of our conversation. So, uh, Cassie, you sho- you are, sorry, I can't read, but, uh, so tonight, uh, as we have moved into the start of the school year, obviously in Plan C, in the virtual, uh, setting, we've said all along that our, our process will be to start safe and, and, and cautiously look at, you know, review at the data, stay in, in contact with our, our county health, uh, people. Um, talk to the other districts, work collaboratively, and make the best decisions for children. Uh, so tonight, I'd like to start with a recommendation and then just give a few points for, or reasons for that recommendation, a little bit of data. And then obviously, we will, uh, you know, see where, where the board wishes to go. So after visiting many schools last week and hearing, uh, some of the wonderful things that are going on and some of the concerns, uh, as well as, I wonder, Cassie, could you bring up the, the Wisconsin Hospital Association data? There are many data points we could review. Uh, I, I've always found this one, the, uh, the one that's labeled positive COVID-nineteen cases identified per day and cumulative, to be some of the most useful trend data. Um, and so what, what caught my attention was that as the mask order was implemented on August one, we did start to see a leveling off or a downward trend. I see in the last few days, we've had a big spike. Um, maybe our, our friends from the Health Department have something to comment about that. I'm not sure if, if the, the reason for that is known. But what this says to me is that masking works. A little later tonight, we're asking the board to approve a, a mandatory mask policy, so I feel that adds a layer of protection. Um, in addition to that, we've been, uh, talking to some of our local districts. Uh, we don't have permission to use names, and some districts have chosen not to share data. Uh, not sure the motivation of that, but because of that, I'm just going to share, uh, three points of data from three comparable regional districts. I'll leave it at that. So one local district, uh, we asked them how many cases and how many quarantines. Uh, these districts all have some in-person attendance, and so obviously, that's of interest to us. Um, one district has, uh, one case and one quarantine. Another district, interestingly, has zero cases, but twenty-seven students are quarantined. Um, clearly, that came from an off-campus, um, event or experience of some sort. And one other district has four active cases, and, and they're choosing not to report any, any quarantine data. So, so data is being, is, you know, a little hard to find. People are just trying to be cautious and protect, uh, you know, confidential information and, and, you know, kind of keep their, their cards close to their vest, if, if you will. Um, so, again, looking at the data, it's, it's pretty clear that, that masking has some impact. There have not been many cases in other districts that do have more in-person. Uh, I did hear about, you know, consistent with some of the, the public commentary we heard tonight, I did hear about, uh, some families that are, are struggling in the virtual environment. Some of it could be worked out, uh, through improved, you know, you know, or improved, um, practice. Uh, you know, just kind of getting used to the whole system. Some parents may find some more support at home. Some parents may find some more support at home. However, I think with our, with our, the information here, and again, our approach to move forward cautiously, that feeds into my recommendation tonight, which is to start into Plan B. And originally, we had talked about needing at least two weeks for our vendors to be prepared. I would like to request that we ask for three weeks, and the reason being that in addition to just starting Plan B, we would like to survey parents and ask them, if we start in Plan B, will you send your children? Because we want to offer people choice, and so while we have created class lists based on alphabetical separation, we don't know how many families are sending their students, and so we need to get a good handle on who would actually be attending. That also informs some of our transportation issues. If the board were to choose to go to Plan B, we would, that survey is ready to go. We would send that out tomorrow. We would give them until Sunday night to complete it. We would get that data to our schools so they could begin that level of detail planning. And then that also would inform our food service and our transportation. So then we would want to give the two weeks for our vendors from that point forward, so I'd recommend that we start October 5. Oh, just one last point, point three there. I would feel good about coming back in two weeks, again, reviewing similar data. We could find other data if the board is requesting that, and we can make a final decision then on September 28 about starting Plan B on October 5. So why don't I stop there and see if people have questions, or actually, if I could, before we go to questions, there are a number of board members and other staff had questions about quarantines. And so because we have our partners from the Health Department with us, I wonder, Angie, could I look to you to help us facilitate a, what happens if a student or a teacher or a family, what happens if somebody gets a COVID case? Who ends up getting quarantined, and how does that work?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hiltz. I'm going to ask Joan to address that question, and maybe Joan, if you can speak to, or if you want somebody else from the Health Department to speak to it, what would that look like at the elementary, middle, and high school level, knowing that those different levels will have different opportunities to cohort students? And then if you could also, we talked a lot about the siblings. If a child is quarantined, then what happens with their siblings as well?
I, thank you, Angie. I will just turn it off with kind of a big initial review, and then I'm going to actually hand it to, I mean, I've heard to speak a little bit more in terms of just kind of the practical operations involved. So I think as we move forward, one of the key measures to keep in mind and our best way to prevent COVID-19 is social distancing. And why I want to bring that up, bringing out how does quarantine look like, it is really based upon how well we all do in terms of social distancing. So one of the things that tips people into being quarantined is if they were within six feet of another person who has COVID, and they spent time of 15 minutes or greater. And so that has the implications for how you organize your school setting in terms of classroom. So part of the measures that we continue to reinforce is that social distancing as well as the cohorting, and the reason for that is if you can limit the number of interactions one child has, new interactions throughout the day, you then reduce the number of children that possibly would need to be quarantined. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Eileen. And Eileen, if you could just kind of maybe talk through what happens when we get a call from a school and how we work with that school then to determine which children needs to be quarantined. And then after you're done, Eileen, you can hand it back to me, and I'll talk a little bit about this.
Sounds good. Thank you, Joan. The big question that we ask when we have a report of a positive child with COVID is who was in contact with that child? And the parameters are, as Joan shared, within six feet or 15 minutes, and that can be cumulative as well. So there's the three-five-minute times that someone is within six feet, and that would count as an exposure. So in whatever setting the child is in, we look, that's the parameters that we use, and we work with the public, or excuse me, with the school health nurses to determine close contacts. Joan, did you want to talk about quarantine?
Sure. So sibling exclusion.
Yeah.
Excuse me. So a few weeks ago, further guidance came out from the Department of Health Services, and one of the recommendations they were making was sibling exclusion. And that recommendation is basically if the child needs to be basically excluded from school because there's a concern that they may have COVID-19, their siblings would be asked to also basically be excluded from school until that child could be tested and confirmed whether they have COVID or not. The reason for that recommendation was that we really want to keep sick kids and their siblings out of school and prevent COVID-related positive cases from extending into the community. And this recommendation was based on the fact that we know that children are more likely to be asymptomatic and therefore may be unknownly spreading the virus within their family and within their schools. So the basis behind that is if a sibling's sick, we're to get it possibly from the other siblings who are not showing any symptoms. In light of the fact that we cannot assure testing in a manner where a family can call up any of their healthcare providers, get tested, and be able to have that done with the reporting out within one to two days, and in light of the fact that our activity level, the number of new cases we have at this point have been lower until, I would say, in the recent days, I am recommending that at this point in time, that I will basically be monitoring our activity level, and at some point, we may make that recommendation. But at this point in time, in Marathon County, the schools have an option whether they want to carry that out, and I am not advising that they need to carry that out. And the reason I wanted to talk a little bit about that is it has huge implications, not only for schoolchildren impacted, the families, and the families and employers as well. So that is something that depending on what we see in the future, and depending on what learning environment you are engaging in, we would ask that they carry out. So that would impact then to the number of children that would be excluded from school at any point in time. So I'll pause here and hand it back to you, Angie, for additional questions or areas you'd like us to explore.
Go ahead, Angie.
Joan, can you address the contact tracing piece? So we had done contact tracing a couple of weeks ago with one of our sports teams, and it was a little bit of a lengthy process. I would just like the board to understand what the contact tracing looks like.
Sure, and I'm going to hand that timing because that's her area of expertise, and she oversees that.
Okay, maybe it'd be helpful to walk through what happens when we get a report at the Health Department. So we'll get a call, or we'll be notified through our electronic disease surveillance system called WES that we have a positive case. It's assigned to an investigator, a contact tracer, who makes contact then with the family, and because in this case, we're talking about a student, we would be speaking with the parent. We would provide education and trace back where that child has been when they are infectious. And then those folks who the child has been around get notified that they have been in close contact and they are subject to quarantine. That list can be a handful of people, to forty people, and each one of those interactions to notify someone who's in quarantine for close contact can take anywhere from 15 minutes to half an hour. So you can see how quickly that adds up, especially in a classroom situation. In a classroom situation, when we're notified, we have a template that the school nurse fills out, and it describes that what we're looking for, are people within six feet for the 15 minutes in the school day. And so they fill out the template for us. We review it with them, and then we add the students to our list of contacts for that child. So the things, the areas that we've seen where things may get delayed are sometimes when we're not able to get that list quickly, and then also if, depending on the volume. So that's one child in one sport event or one classroom, but we have a large county, and we have a fair amount of cases and only a finite amount of resources. So us being able to get to doing the contact notification and therefore being able to contain spread in our community, it's delayed the more cases and contacts we have. And we see that young people, so young, could be young adult, all the way down to small children, have a lot more contacts than an older couple who just goes to church and to the grocery store. So it is very much taxing our contact tracing team, and when we do have a school case, we have a school response team dedicated to that. It takes dedicated people all day long, usually, to manage a case from a school. So just to give you a little perspective on the intensity of getting a report of a child and the number of contacts that they may have.
Thank you. I know the school board had a number of questions, particularly about quarantining and contact tracing. Is there anything that the school board would like to directly ask the Health Department about?
Hi, this is Pat. Can you tell me, so of all the districts that you serve in the county, how many students, again, maybe you said this and I missed it, my apologies, but how many students have you had to quarantine so far this year for those that have had in-person learning?
Amanda, do you have the number of cases? So we are not able to track the number of people in quarantine down to school district level. We're able to track them based off of census tract, the positive, off the census tract. So if that's a number that you would like, we would have to do that manually, correct, Eileen? Rather than pulling from the WES data system. So we can get that information for you, but it would not be down to your school district level.
So then there's no precise way to say that the school district that has been X percent face-to-face and X percent virtual has experienced, you know, this level of quarantining percentage or something like that? Is that...
So we would be able, we would be able to do, we'd be able to go based off of the contacts of the positive cases. However, we wouldn't be able to do that quickly off of a school district level. And I would caution you about making decisions based off of simply the quarantine measure. We at the Health Department are looking at several metrics that would help us to determine what mitigation measures that we are recommending schools to be engaging in. So in addition to the positive case results, we're looking at things like our activity level, the Harvard Global Health Institute activity levels, our testing capacity locally in terms of can people get a test, as well as how long does it take to get those test results back? We're also looking at our, excuse me, our ability to contact trace, or excuse me, to case investigation within 24 hours and contact trace within 48 hours, and also the level of influenza-like illness that's occurring within districts. So for us to tell you what another district's quarantine measures are, I don't know how helpful that that would be for you. It would be, that would be a measure that you would watch within your own district, and if your quarantine levels are high, you may still also be able to engage in virtual learning. So then you have to look at your district's ability, you know, are there enough teachers to teach? Are there enough students well enough to teach?
Right.
Even though if they're in quarantine, you may still be able to do virtual learning.
No, I understand all that, and frankly, the only piece of data that matters to me right now is what is that ratio of students in, you know, in-person learning to those that are being quarantined or the number of positive cases? All of the other local rates or the Harvard Institute rates and all that stuff are, they're helpful, but frankly, they're not very meaningful at a local level when we're trying to make a decision on whether or to what extent we send kids back face-to-face. It would be very helpful to know for those districts that did send kids back face-to-face, what is their experience been? Be that quarantine, be that positive cases, whatever metric you want to put on it, that data would be helpful.
So we would also then have to consider what preventive measures the school's engaging in.
Okay, sure.
So if it's okay with Joan and Eileen, we can try to get that information if that's acceptable? Probably have to do it based off of census tract, though, not school district or not.
Yeah, this is Joan, and we can definitely take a look at pulling some of that data. You know, I understand what you're trying, what you're wanting to. The purpose of that data is really to get a sense of what is the impact of quarantines on the ability to teach and children being present to teach. And we can take a look at that, but I do think, too, there's some caution in looking at that data in terms of then matching it up with what are those measures that that school is actually carrying out, because we know things like social distancing, cohorting, you know, what's happening on buses all play into what ends up impacting that school in terms of children needing to be isolated with quarantine. I think, too, the other thing I'd like people to think about is kind of the goal stream. You know, we talk about quarantine, and, you know, and I think that's an important measure to be paying attention to because that does become your tipping point for whether, what learning environment you are also engaged in, but as well as, you know, can you teach? Is those further upstream measures? And part of that has to do with, we know there's COVID out in our community, and do we have adequate testing to support the type, the number of tests that are needed? Because we know when people are congregating together in household among people they don't live in, we're going to see more COVID occurring, and so more testing will, demands will be placed on testing and balancing that also with kind of... placed on testing and balancing that also with contact tracing. And the reason why contact tracing is so important, it's our number one tool right now for controlling spread, is really identifying those contacts and having them quarantined. So both those are really important and that's why Amanda talked about, those are other measures we do want to pay attention to. Because if we can't test adequately and if we can't do contact tracing adequately, what you're going to see is more spread and more children in quarantine.
No, I appreciate the feedback. And you're right, I'm just trying to understand for myself, you know, all, all the theoretics are great, but what I'm really interested in is the practical results that we've been experiencing in the county so far with districts that do have face-to-face. So thank you for your, for your thoughts.
Lance, I see you have your hand raised. Would you like to go ahead and ask your question and then after that Beth can go? Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. One is, where is the line between what the health department can mandate or require versus what's recommended? So we start talking about the length of the quarantine and who is under quarantine. Is that a school district decision? Is that a health department requires it and the school district has no options? How does that work?
Thank you, Lance. This is Joan. I'll field that one. I would say it's a requirement. It's something we are requiring everybody who is identified as a close contact to undergo 14-day quarantine. And we're fortunate because in a school setting, you actually can carry that out in terms of us communicating to the school which children need to be within that 14-day quarantine and when they can be released. And that quarantine is really important because if we don't have children quarantined, what we're going to see then is further spread of the disease and then things are going to get out of control.
Does that, does that extend you to the parent workforce as well? Or are you mandating a quarantine for parents then of children who are on the contact list? Are you able to require them to not work?
We are requiring everybody to undergo a 14-day quarantine, yes. And we work closely with our, with businesses as well as other entities. And so that is an expectation that's communicated to everybody who is in close contact.
This is Eileen. I'll just jump in here a little bit. Lance, if you were asking if a child was under quarantine because they have, they were in close contact, and if the parents then have to stay home, the answer is no. The child needs supervision, of course, but the, no one else in the home is under quarantine. They're just, they would be contacts of a contact and there wouldn't be any requirement of them unless the child then subsequently tested positive. Then it filters the family and then everyone needs to quarantine. They need to quarantine for the length of time that the child is ill, typically ten-ish days. And then for, and it extends then for 14 days after the child is well. So it's not uncommon that a family is in quarantine for long periods of time, 24 days or more, depending if other children in that home become sick with COVID.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that was the second part of the question. So, okay, I think you guys answered both.
I think it's my turn. Should I go?
Yes, please go.
Okay. I have a question in here, but I just wanted to say a couple of things so you could know what I'm thinking. As I've been doing the research, it seems like many trusted health experts say schools should only open when it's safe to do so, but there doesn't seem to be a single set of standards to determine when it's safe. It's recommended that virus rates in the community be low, but that really hasn't been clearly defined. So it seems like local school districts and their health departments are left to figure it out on their own. And it seems to create kind of a patchwork of different standards with no clear answers. But repeatedly, I'm hearing these things, that there should be a downward trend in positive cases for at least 14 days, that a test positivity rate of 5% or lower should be in place for at least two weeks, and that the transmission rate should be below 1%. So when I'm thinking about making a big decision like whether or not kids should go back to school in person, I'm looking at the size of the Wausau School District and realizing that if the community of Wausau is 39,000 people and we add up the over 8,000 students we have and over 1,400 employees, we pretty much represent about 25% of the community. And we don't exist in a bubble. What happens in our schools extends out into our community. So considering that, how and when do we bring, how and when we bring people back together will have a huge impact on the entire community. So here's my question. As public health experts, what measures do you think we should be looking at as we make decisions? And how is our community doing in regards to those measures? It seems a little bit early to look at quarantine because the incubation period of COVID is up to 14 days and we've only been in school for a little while in our neighboring districts. So that could still come in the next few weeks. But, but again, you know, what do you think are the most important measures to look at? And how is the Wausau School District community doing as far as the community's spread?
I think Steph, I'll take a stand at this and then Amanda, I will look to you as well since you're one of our data go bros. The measures we're looking at is, as Amanda indicated, is our activity level. And that is a measure that the Wisconsin Department of Health Services uses and it looks at burden as well as trajectory. They do use the Harvard Global Health Institute model, but Wisconsin unveiled the first to acknowledge it is, is more conservative in terms of those thresholds. In addition then, I have started using the Harvard Global Health Institute risk levels in monitoring what has been happening here in Marathon County. And I'll pause at some point and talk about census tract level data because I know everybody wants to, is interested in what's happening in my own backyard. Marathon County, as we know, is a large geographic county. So the Harvard Global Health Institute, we actually, in recent weeks, have done fairly well. We're in the lower threshold among the various indicators. So like in August 16th, we only had 31 cases across the county, 49 then the week of August 23rd, and then 39 the week of August 30th. And then this past week, we dipped up again to 49. So in terms of looking at the Harvard goal, we're, we're in low to moderate. And for overall, for this week, we've been in a lower level. And, and you can see the difference because back in July, when we had 1395 cases, we were, were higher threshold in that testing area. In terms of testing positivity, last week, for the past two weeks, that data was available, we were at 4.1%. So we are below that 5%. I think that's can be challenging sometimes because it depends on who's getting tested. So I don't put all my eggs in that basket. It's just another measure to take a look at. And then what I also look at is testing capability in our systems. So things like, when I talk about testing capability, when you use one of the call lines and you get a hold of somebody and can you do that in a reasonable amount of time? Because we know most people, if somebody doesn't answer their question within the first 15 minutes or so, they're likely to go and not get tested if it's not working online. So we look at not only the actual ability to get tested, we're looking at things like somebody answering their call and arranging for a test. Can that test then be processed within one to two days? Because again, it gives us lead time to do that contact estimation. And then we also look at can they report it to the health department and the town manager? And then we've talked about contact tracing. So the other measures we're looking at is can we start an investigation within 24 hours and can we notify all contacts within 48 hours? And then monitoring for influenza-like illness has begun and will occur as we go forward. I want to just talk a little bit about census tract. We are in the process of pulling data so we can actually provide the number of cases within two-week period by census tract. Because right now, the data that's available from the Department of Health Services looks at accumulated cases since March. And that really doesn't tell us what is the impact today. So that's something that we are working on and will have available within the next couple of weeks. So it's all those metrics that we take a look at to really inform what mitigation measures should a school be carrying out and what learning environment is best given that activity Does that answer your question, Beth?
Yeah, I would just follow up by saying, you know, when I look at the dashboard, it tells us that Marathon County is in the high range. How does that jive with what you were just saying about the Harvard Global Health Institute risk level?
Yeah. DHS has their, their benchmarks for, for their cutoff points are lower than the Harvard level. And so that's why you see that. And there has been a lot of discussion at the state level among health officers and state staff that because our threshold is so, is much lower than the Harvard model, Marathon County and many of our other counties are in the high range. And we've been in the high range since June 24th. And the question is, as we move forward, does that really inform us as well as the Harvard model, which has a higher threshold?
And then how, how do you feel the, the community is doing for the mitigation spread using masking and social distancing? Do you have a sense of that at all?
I don't.
Okay.
I think for the most part, overall, I think people are engaging and are being conscious of, you know, who do I socialize with? Trying to avoid large gatherings, being mindful if they are going to engage because life continues. We have babies being born, weddings being held, funerals also being held. So I think people are conscious of it and making conscious choices. I would say the majority of people are. And the same with masking. I have seen a huge change in, you know, social life given my work demands, but when I am out and about, I have seen a huge change in masking as a result. And I think we have seen a decrease in cases until just recently. And I think part of that is the universities starting up, schools starting up. But masking has, is associated with some of those decreased cases we've seen.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are there some?
I guess there is.
Yeah, that's okay. Jane. Oh, okay. Jane, if you're Ms. Race, go ahead and then I'll ask my question after you.
I just wanted to know, somebody asked, who pays for these tests? Because they're expensive and if, if people don't know how it's going to be paid for, they aren't going to come in and get tested.
Yeah, it's a good question. They, we put together a flyer and all the schools received it and it's something that we're asking schools to distribute to parents when their child does need to be excluded and be evaluated for COVID. So all our healthcare systems are working with individuals when they do need testing to determine whether or not they may have a source for insurance. If they do, insurance may be billed for it, but our healthcare systems are working to ensure that people do not end up with out-of-pocket costs. And part of that is being subsidized through the federal government care spots.
Go ahead, Tricia.
I have a question about quarantine policy. So if a child in the district is determined to have to be under quarantine, just for clarification, the health department does communicate that with the district. That's my first question so that we know, the school knows, that child is not supposed to be in the building if we are in Plan B or Plan A. But secondly, there seems to be a huge amount that's out of the control of the district and out of the control of the health department as it relates to whether or not that child is actually quarantined. They might not be in the school, but I guess, could you speak to that a little bit? I mean, are you experiencing difficulties with ensuring people are in quarantine? How do you, what do you do to sign off for them so that we know, okay, this child can come back in the building?
Eileen, I'm going to have you address the process for school notifications and how we monitor for quarantine.
Good question. We, when there is a case in a school, we know then the children that were close contacts and who are supposed to be in quarantine. So we work with the school on that so that we're all on the same page about that. So they know that it's 14 days from the last, the child's last exposure to the case. That can change if a child becomes symptomatic and subsequently gets tested themselves. And depending on what happens with that, their quarantine would turn into an isolation and then things could get extended. The thing to remember though, because of the level of community transmission that we have, we do not always know the children who are in quarantine for other reasons. So we've had kids in quarantine from other counties, from maybe their grandfather has COVID and now they're in quarantine. So we, it's impossible for us to know how many children are in quarantine in our community. And it's really the honor system for those families to be speaking to the schools about their child's attendance at school related to quarantine. So it's a, it's a difficult position to be in because we're counting on families to do the right thing. And most families do the right thing, but we can't, we don't go to their homes, we don't check on them to assure that they are in quarantine or isolation.
Go ahead. I know we're going to have another one. Okay, done. Con, did you have a question?
Um, yes, I did. Okay. So my, my question is, I know that there are certain county departments that serve other counties that are surrounding us. Does the health department do the same thing with surrounding counties?
We do not provide disease investigation, contact tracing for other counties. This is a service that we provide solely for Marathon County. We do have, as you indicated, a collaborative working relationships with our surrounding counties in terms of sharing other program initiatives. But in terms of disease investigation, contact tracing, that's something that we do alone for Marathon County and our surrounding counties are doing theirs as well.
Okay. And then one more question. How are, how are we doing in regards to capacity? Are we halfway there? Are we not even close? Do you have an estimate?
Yeah, I think in terms of testing capacity, we're doing okay right now. I know that every day we go further out, our capacity is increasing. I know that every day we go further out, our capacity is increasing among our healthcare systems. In terms of our ability to do disease investigation, contact tracing within that one-to-two day window, depends on how many cases we get in a day. I would say up until Sunday, we were doing really well. And then over the weekend, if anybody watches the data, you can see we get 30 cases come in one day. When that occurs, that does impact our ability to be responsive in getting through those disease investigation, contact tracing within that window time we want. In terms of our staffing, because people are probably asking the question, well, what resources are you putting into this? We currently have 25 contracted employees on staff. We have put in place modeling for how many staff we need for five cases per day, 10, 15 cases, and 20 per day. And we are continuing to build our capacity. And our goal is to be able to respond to 15 cases per day is what we are building towards. And we are close to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Second. Okay, go ahead, Lee.
My question is this. I'm sure that you're overwhelmed with all the data that we're getting, you're getting about COVID. But there's been some significant questions about epidemiological data that's related to increase in alcohol and drug abuse, suicide, mental health issues. Are you monitoring those kinds of data also?
Yeah, Lee, that's a really good question. That data is being collected at the state level. And at this point in time, we don't have capabilities or resources at a local level to measure that level of change that would have occurred recently. I do think your question highlights what we've, what we all heard tonight. That is, you know, weighing out, balancing the educational, social, emotional development needs of children with the health risks associated with COVID. And it's a tough spot to be in. And as a public health department, and public health departments across the state and across the nation, our resources are too being redirected to address COVID. And we are also concerned about programming and the services we would provide in some of these other areas that we're not in right now. So it is, it's a reality health department, it is.
Did any other board members have any questions?
Does the administration have more for the board? Otherwise, I think we probably have a lot of discussion to start to engage in.
Nothing to add right now. We'll help answer questions.
Okay, so the administration has brought a motion, or recommended a motion, I should say. And I think that we have a lot of questions. The recommended motion is to move to Plan B with a start date of October 5th. We've heard a lot of things as it relates to public comment across the board, things that are certainly, there's so many different concerns. And to try to balance all of these things, it's extremely complex. I know one of the reasons that was listed to move from Plan C identified some of the struggling families that were identified that you've seen in the very first week. I'm wondering if there is some option to refine Plan C so we can build further supports. I think that maybe there's a way that we can be creative to build on the support that exists. I certainly am very concerned about this quarantine policy where there's an honor system and exposure that could come under, well, frankly, under any plan, but especially Plan B or Plan A.
Yeah, the, I will tell you that, you know, as again, as I've spoken to principals and teachers and front office staff, I, we rely heavily on the creativity of our people. They are always looking for ways to support students. And yes, it will get better. The question is how much and how quickly, right? And how many of the barriers can we not overcome? So I don't have a great answer for your question. And I don't know if maybe someone from the ed team who's on here, who had some significant conversation during the development of the plan, maybe there's some insights you could share at this point? Or not.
Probably somebody. Do you want me to share some of what we're already doing?
Would you? Sure.
Go ahead, Angie.
Until somebody from the ed department is ready to unmute, they're helping us downstairs as well. So they might have to get to their computer. I'll share some of the supports that we've put in place for students socially and emotionally. We have given every teacher in our district a referral form. So if they're concerned about safety or just concerned that they haven't seen a child for more than 24 hours, they would fill out that referral form, which immediately goes to the principal and pupil services. Myself, pupil services, our SROs, we are doing home visits to check on those children. And we physically want to see those children. We will not go into homes, but we want the child to at least come to the door so we can physically see that they are okay. That does not mitigate the responsibility for a teacher to call social services. If they're, if they know something is really wrong, they still have to do that piece of it. But this is just if we haven't seen the child for a day, we can't get a hold of them, we haven't been in touch with the parent, but simply want to see if that child is okay or needs any supports. We are concerned that children in a situation that may be abusive won't talk to us virtually. That has been a concern of ours from day one, that we are not physically seeing our kids every single day. There is, there's nothing that's going to replace that. Even us going to the home and physically seeing that child, that child might still be in a really difficult situation and they might be unable to tell people that. So we won't sugarcoat that. That's a huge concern of ours. Is anybody from the ed department able to talk about some of the educational strategies and supports that we're putting in place with Plan C?
Andrea looks ready.
Thank you, Angie. This is Andrea from the Education Department. Last week, during our first four days of virtual learning, we asked our campus principals to join multiple Google meets to be able to experience the educational learning that was happening at all levels kindergarten to 12th grade. We were intentional of that practice because we wanted them to gather the successes that our students and our educators were experiencing and then also follow up on the challenges. We've called a meeting tomorrow with all of our campus principals, elementary, middle, and high school to review that data and to continue to troubleshoot how we will best be able to support not only our learners and our families, but our educators in the classroom as well.
All right, thanks for that. I'm sure there's a lot of board members that are going to want to weigh in. I guess one thing that I will say is I know that there are some families that are struggling. I've heard anecdotally as far as some households where there's maybe just one parent in the household and they're not there during the day. And I guess I would, I would like to support refining Plan C and identifying those families that need that extra support and figuring out how to develop the hubs in greater detail. I know there's other concerns as it relates to the elementary grades. Maybe we could have some creative discussions there. I personally have some serious concerns about moving this early. I know October 5th doesn't sound early, but I think there's a lot of, it feels very early. And Plan B, my own considerations, my own concerns with that are, do relate to teacher workload. I think when we talked about it in July, and I know there are so many people that participated in those committees and I don't want to, you know, very grateful for their work. But now people are in the buildings and I think it seems like it's going to be a lot for the teachers and the workload to try to manage, half virtual, half in the classrooms. So I'm just trying, that's where I'm at. And I'm sure every board member is going to have some comments on this critical matter. I see Con Lo has her hand raised, Beth Martin, Jane Roche, Jim Boucher, Lance Trollop. Do you want to take turns sharing here?
Me too.
Yeah, I can go first. I'll go second. So I have a question for Dr. Hill. You mentioned that you were requesting three weeks for changes if we were to go back to Plan B. I remember before you said that you needed approximately a month for changes. Are you shaving a week off of that?
No, originally, we thought we could do it in two weeks. We're actually adding a week so that we could survey parents to get their feedback.
Okay, all right. You're right about that. Thank you. And that's all I have for now.
Beth? I just want to, it sounded to me like, Tricia, you were making a motion that we remain in C and refine reaching out to families that are struggling.
She could.
Am I right?
It certainly is one I'm willing to make. I'm certainly, you certainly can make the motion as well. We still just leave it open for discussion.
Then I'll make that motion, that we remain in C and refine how we deal with families that are struggling.
I will second that.
I forgot everybody else, but I've got questions and discussions that I definitely want to have happen before we start rolling the motions.
Absolutely. It's just on the table.
Well, since I'm hogging the time, I'll ask those questions right now. I've got three questions for administration specifically related to Plan B. I'm going to think Tricia mentioned, I'm real concerned with the teacher workload. It's something I've talked about in the past. I just don't know that it's even possible or sustainable in its current sort of model. One of the questions that I have is related to encore classes. Currently, right now, Plan A would have encore classes in the elementary rooms taking place in their usual locations. But B would have them taking place in the teacher's main classroom. I think, I think the teachers need that prep time. If we go to Plan B, it's going to require more time from our teachers, not less. So I don't think we can go to Plan B and take away that prep time. And I'm wondering what the administrative thought is on those students still being able to go to their encore rooms. They may be more restricted in terms of what they can do than they were pre-COVID. But what would prevent those students from doing their encore classes in their actual encore rooms in the gym or dark room or whatever it might be? Even if it's the same virtual education, at least if it was in that teacher's room, so the classroom teacher has that time.
As I understand, I think, Andrea, do you have the complete answer to that? I could, I could give a short answer.
Sure, I'd be happy to address. Thank you, Lance, for the question. So we took a lot of things into consideration in Plan B, safety of both students and staff, and considering mitigating the sheer amount of adults that would integrate into different cohorts of students. So we had conversations around encore staff because in an elementary school, that's a rise of approximately six additional adults. So throughout the day, it could be a rotating door of an encore teacher going into multiple classrooms. And we were looking at the information and data to indicate how many students then would be impacted by that adult on a rotating basis. It could very quickly, as we've heard this evening, if there was a combination of an adult or a student in any one of those classrooms who would potentially need to be quarantined and/or become positive with COVID, that could very quickly, you know, take away some of our available staff, being the encore staff that would be available. So we're trying to balance that, both safety of students and our staff. We're also thinking about if we were to integrate or to introduce cohorts of students into, let's say, the music room, and we have 30 minutes of music on a regular rotating basis every half an hour and some are backed up to one another in courses or classes. Then we would have to end that class early. We'd have to teach that teacher how to sanitize and disinfect their space. So now we have to have the students exit the encore classroom. We need an adult to be able to monitor them if, let's say, they're in the hallway waiting to go from music to potentially PE. And then we have to teach that adult how to stay clean. How many minutes of time do we need to disinfect? Make sure things are dry before we introduce the next cohort of students. So pretty quickly, what would have been an hour of potential prep and plan for a teacher, we might have to reintroduce them to go back to, let's say, the music room, take their students and move them physically the six feet of distance in safety, masking them from music into a quiet potential situation as well. So we were really kind of trying to troubleshoot, go through each one of those scenarios and find out what would be in the best interest of both our students and our staff.
Yeah, those concerns all make sense to me. But the ability of the plan to actually be able to be carried out is important. And, you know, when I look at the students eating lunch in the classroom teacher's room, students having encore in the classroom teacher's room. I mean, if it, if we're talking about just a short transition period, we're asking our teachers, hey, you know, do Plan B for a few weeks as we transition to Plan A, I think they could manage and they could do the best they can. But it's not, it's not a sustainable model, I don't think. My other question related to Plan B is, do we lose the hub access if we are in Plan B? Currently, in Plan C, we have those hubs, and Plan B, with those hubs still exist? Where would they be located? Who would supervise them if we have students in the schools?
I don't know if Andrea's going to answer. The hub would continue in this because we still have students who have internet access issues. We would still have students with special education needs. So the hub would continue. It would just alter slightly based on the, on the plan.
The last question I have, or at least for now anyway, is related to this option that families can choose to remain virtual. And I see that that is indicated in the materials that that often would exist for Plan A as well. Who teaches those virtual students? Is it, is it WAVE? Is it a different teacher who's dedicated to teaching the virtual students? Or are you thinking that the classroom teacher is going to teach all the kids in person and then have a virtual lesson as well?
Correct, yeah. Wherever the student is scheduled, so similar to Plan B. If I'm the teacher and I'm teaching the students who are in front of me, whether it's students in alternate weeks or students who've selected the virtual option, I would be managing both.
Yeah, and again, I just don't think it's sustainable. I don't think our teachers can teach both. And I think that's what WAVE is for. And that's, that's the option that we pushed and that we told parents and families to take if they weren't comfortable that we're sending their kids back to school. And we talked about how there would be times when we'd be sending our kids back to school. So I think during the B option, it's workable. But I don't see how in A, we can have, you know, a teacher has her normal class of all the kids, that she always teaches in class, in person, the same number of hours that they normally teach, which, and work and prep, which is more than a 40-hour week. And then they have to do an online curriculum, lessons, working with kids as well. I just don't think we can do it.
You know, so the vision for it is that they would be teaching and then the students really from home would be observing. And we've talked to staff about, you know, what strategies can be used to make sure that is workable? You know, whether, you know, it's partner work, whatever. I don't know, again, if Andrea wants to speak more to the viability I don't know, again, if Andrea wants to speak more to the viability of the blended model.
Thank you, Dr. Hiltz. Yes, we're going to continue to refine that viability of both synchronous and asynchronous learning, utilizing the webcams as they become available. One option that we maybe have not explored, however, in speaking with my colleagues within the state of Wisconsin and really around the Midwest, is if we offer families an opportunity to remain virtual, and that's not necessarily in our Wave charter school, but virtually as we know it, going into Plan B or potentially Plan A, we might want to take a look at our numbers. And if we have a sheer number of students at any grade level, we might want to engage in conversation of identifying perhaps, let's say, a kindergarten teacher who would remain 100% virtual and teaching those students that are at home. Just a thought and an idea, again, in conversations I've been having and tracking things around the state, that's one option that's maybe being explored in different districts. So that would be something that I would bring back undoubtedly to Dr. Hiltz and our End of 19 Committee planning, but also to our campus principals, at least to explore that option.
Yeah, I think we have to look at those options and more. You know, the committees did great work with what they had to work with when they came up with these plans, but they have a lot more to work with now. You know, we have teachers in our district now, we have friends who are teaching in other districts, we have kids, our own kids in other districts. We have a lot more to draw upon now than what we did this summer, so we can find out what's working and what's not. And we have, we really have to keep in mind what's sustainable for the long term. If we're looking at these plans as something that might be in place for months at a time, we can't burn our teachers out two weeks into it. You know, they're not going to ask them to work 80 hours a week for the whole year. It just, we can't do that.
I just want to follow, I'm not sure where we are in hands raised, but just to Andrea, your point about looking to see if there might be virtual teachers that could do that, because I think it's very important to point out that Wave is asynchronous, whereas this option to have synchronous remote learning is very different. You know, I see this just firsthand as a parent and what my son is doing compared to the spring, and great job in the spring, we had to triage that, and everybody did amazing. But to have that option for synchronous, live, remote learning, and to also take the workload off of teachers, if that's something that can be explored, I think that would be really great. And I also want to say, if there's a way to be able to stay virtually on C and to be able to skip B and go to A, I think that would be really wonderful, too. I don't think today is the day for that, but I think that anything we could do for, to eliminate all those transitions would be wonderful for teachers, families, and students.
Beth, did you want to go ahead and ask your question? I see your hand is raised.
Okay, first of all, before I ask my questions, I just want to say shout out to our employees at all levels, because everyone's gone above and beyond in this incredible challenge. And as one writer who brought to the board said, "That deserves public acknowledgement," and it does. But I have some concerns with Plan B. I don't think we're really ready to go to Plan B for a couple of reasons. I think we maybe want to make some adjustments to Plan B based on what I've been hearing from both teachers and other districts. It sounds like our hub model is really working. So, and people are telling me that the hub model might have more capacity, that we might be able to take some of these unique situations where people or families are really struggling and integrate them into that hub model. So I'd like, I would like to explore that idea. But here's some other concerns I have about Plan B, and Lance suggested this too, but I just don't think it's possible to teach in person and virtual at the same time. Somebody, one of those groups is always going to be shortchanged when it comes to the attention of the teacher, not to mention that you're teaching it totally differently. When you're teaching virtually, you might be sharing a document, but when you're teaching it around the class, you're doing something different. And I'm not sure. I mean, I think we need to get some feedback from teachers now that they've been teaching virtually to ask, is that even possible? Because we want to keep our teachers healthy, and right now, we have a system that's working, and it's keeping our staff healthy. And we don't want to go into a situation where we can't sustain it. If we go to Plan B or Plan C and our staff gets sick, or starts quarantining, or they have a child that has been in isolation, and their second kid gets sick, and then they have to quarantine for 14 days after both of those 10-day isolations, pretty soon you're, you've got staff for over a month. And I know we can count on substitutes. Substitutes mostly are retired teachers, and they're not going to want to come into the schools at this point. Plus, the learning curve to do what our teachers are doing right now, it's large to ask somebody to just walk in and be able to do that. At this point, we've only had four days of virtual learning, and I don't think that's long enough to consider upending the consistency and the routine. I think we should work the king's soul and make sure everybody gets past the learning curve on virtual learning, because I think we're going to have to go back to virtual learning at some point during the school year. I mean, I think numbers just went up again, they might go up again. I think we're in for a rough fall and a rough winter. And if we can get this under our belt so that we get it working and people feel comfortable with it, when we get to the point where we have to go back to virtual learning at some future point in the school year, people are going to know how to do it, they're going to be comfortable. If we change it right now, it's going to be so confusing. And I also don't think it's safe. I personally don't think it's safe in the community right now. I worry about the rotation link in Plan B, because you wouldn't see some kids for nine days. That's a long time. So if we're trying to, let's say, we're not going to teach virtually and in person at the same time, and we're trying to give kids things that they can do independently until they see their teacher again, I feel like that's too long of a time. So that might be a great thing to explore. And I've also heard from people that some of the software applications they feel they need or features in software, we don't have yet. So I want to make sure that before we moved into Plan B, everything was in place and ready to work. So I just want to say, it's not really about just opening the schools, it's about keeping them open. And I guess I'll just end with this quote, because this is a really difficult decision. No matter what we do, not everyone's going to be happy. But I don't even think the people who want kids to go back to school are going to be happy with Plan B. They want Plan A. So I think if we go to Plan B, everybody's going to be mad about it. It's not going to work for anyone. So I think we have to seriously think about that. But there was a quote from a Colorado superintendent at West Grand, and I've seen it a couple of times, and one of the letters we got this in the last few weeks quoted this guy again. And it says, "In the end, it will be impossible to know if we overreacted or did too much, but it will be quite apparent if we underreacted or did too little." I personally don't think it's safe yet, and I wish it were, because everybody, the teachers want the kids back, the parents want the kids back, we all want our lives back before COVID. But I just don't think we're there yet.
Jim, you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead with your comment? Jim, you're muted, just one moment. Okay, you're ready to go now.
Thank you. This is a question more for Andrea, follow up on what she's talking about and kind of a summary of what we've heard from Lance and Beth. You said at one point, you're doing as many things to support the teachers. You could expound on that a little bit so that we know what you're doing. And how is that affecting engagement for students? So what are we doing for our teachers, and how are we working with them to help engage them with the students that are at home? Let's start with that, Andrea.
Sure. So I'm happy to respond, and then my colleague, Dr. Risher, might want to speak to the secondary as well. So I think about what opportunities that we provided before our learners actually approached us and joined us last week. We started by offering up to three days of professional learning based on what our educators felt that they needed to be prepared for virtual learning to begin in early September. So that's where we began, and we continued with every Friday, offering opportunities for professional learning, and again, based on choice. What is it that our classroom educators are asking for? Is it more learning around ITsLearning, our learning management system? Is it more learning around CSOW? Is it content learning? What is it that they need to be able to effectively teach in a virtual environment, which positively impact their learners at home? So it's really rooted in professional learning, but based in choice. We want to offer a multitude of choice for educators, and then they can teach them what it is that they need to do to impact that learning. Our return to learn conferences, which you are all a little aware, we offered for our learner and adults from their home to join us in our schools to meet and greet their educator of choice, whether it was in the elementary, a grade-level educator, and/or at the secondary in a content area. I've heard nothing but positive responses, both from educators, students, and/or adults that join those. They said it was just wonderful, one, to be able to come into the school and feel like they belonged, even if it was for only 30 minutes. During that 30 minutes, I have heard wonderful celebrations of the information that was shared by our educators, educators that were providing explicit instructions of how do you get into the systems that we use, such as CSOW or ITsLearning. And then really laying out, what does the day look like, let's say, for a second-grade student at Thomas Jefferson, and they would go step-by-step through the day, indicating about how many minutes of time would we expect a learner to be online, somewhere probably from 10 to 15 in the area of English Language Arts. Then there'd be independent learning that would happen at home, and then they might check in again during an encore class. So really, we came at it from a couple of perspectives. One, what is it our educators needed to feel successful to start the year in a virtual learning environment? And then also, what did our families need? And I think that was just so important that we offered them that, come to our school if you feel comfortable, let's say, meet and greet in a very safe environment, your child's educator set the stage for what's going to happen this year, and then we sent them home with resources. So not only did they get to take home their technology or their device, but then they also were given other resources. Our classroom educators walked them through how to use those resources, with a learning that would occur on a daily basis. And then we're really relying, have a look down at our people services staff, and Mrs. Lee, my aunt talked to this as well, they are making calls daily. If we don't have students checking in and in attendance at the elementary level between 8:30 and 10:00, someone in that school is checking in, that student and that family to making sure that, maybe their learning's going to start in the afternoon. We just want to make sure that they're going to be engaged and they have what they need. We're also buying up and offering food now so that our families have that food and that resource available as well. So really, it's a large community effort within our schools to make sure that students are learning and engaged.
You might want to send it over to your secondary counterpart to also talk about it, because many phone calls that I've been receiving have been from the secondary area, and I'm concerned for them for the engagement of their students, too.
Hi, yes, this is Jennifer. I can speak to secondary a little bit. First, I would echo everything that Andrea shared. I think the things that were happening at the elementary level are also happening at the middle and high schools as well. In addition to some of the things that she mentioned, I think one of the stronger supports that we have in place for our teachers right now is the ability for them to collaborate with each other on Fridays. And that can happen through informal teacher-to-teacher sharing of how things are going while they're prepping lessons or prepping instruction. That could be team meetings, it could be department meetings, it could be full staff meetings. So just keeping in mind that Fridays are set aside for that professional learning, yes, formally, but also a big piece of that is just collaboration among the teachers, as well as student supports. As far as attendance, we do have people notifying families if students are not attending their live sessions. So that's a way to just give families a heads up if somebody isn't participating. And if they're not participating because they don't have the access, we are doing the best we can to make sure that the direct instruction or the resources are provided separately. For example, I think of one of the high school science teachers who's been doing a variety of videos. Those are available not only live, but those stay within ITsLearning, so students or families can watch them at any time, and can even go back and watch them to review. So those are some of the secondary things that are happening for staff and for students. I think the other thing to, just to keep in mind, is that if we were to transition to a Plan B, I think there's a misconception that we would have a combination of learning the way it looked before last March and learning virtually. And that's where there's this idea that teachers would be doing two different things. Overall, I think our advice or our message to teachers is to be, to do exactly what Beth Martin talked about, let's get really good at virtual. And even if some of our students are able to come back to us in a Plan B, that foundation of where the instruction is will start in the virtual. So for example, whether a student is in person or at home, they might access their learning through ITsLearning. They might go find a video there, they might go find a reading there, they might submit their work there. So that's the one piece that'll be consistent across, I think, all three models. It's probably not perfect. I think we have to be honest about that. So I don't want to say that it's not going to be a challenge to teach students at home and in person at the same time. It is a challenge, it's not something we've done before. But our goal is to get good at that virtual foundation, to make it as smooth as possible for students and for staff as we move between models across the year.
Jim's muted.
I'm pertaining to technology. The webcams are great, but we only have half of them. I'm concerned about the fact that when a teacher is teaching in the classroom and speaking to students, is there a microphone system in our classroom so that the audio-enhanced system can pick up for the people that are listening? Those audio-enhanced speaker systems are pretty inexpensive, and for our 504 and our IEP students, those are imperative for people that have hearing problems. And so I'm concerned about that technology maybe not being there along with those teachers that walk a lot. There are computer tripod attachments that you can put your iPad on or your phone on that with a medallion around the neck will follow the teacher and give some sort of sense of being in the classroom, yes. I don't know if people have experimented with those, but five years ago, they were pretty expensive. Now you can get those at a cut rate. So I throw those technology items out there because it's not just the webcam, but it's sound, it's movement, that makes virtual more real. And right now, that's why I'm concerned about being in virtual, is that we don't have those items that are very important to make virtual good. My comment. So I toss it to John.
Well, I mean, those are excellent points, Jimmy, and you do need those things. I think when we reference our webcams, I'm going to say, first shipment of them arrives in this district tomorrow. We just got confirmation from the vendor, but that webcam is a very high-quality item. It doesn't have the ability to track a teacher, but it offers a much wider view, so it doesn't necessarily have to track the teacher. It gets a much wider view than, say, the camera on your screen or the one that I'm using now. The webcam was also meant to serve as like a conference phone, so it's got an enhanced microphone in it as well as an enhanced speaker set within it. So it's really a one, an all-in-one component. I'm not equating it to a full, decked-out classroom with multiple speakers in there, but this webcam really was a higher-quality item designed to address a wider field of vision, an increased, more sensitive microphone, and an increased speaker set to improve the sound quality coming out of it.
And finally, professional development for our teachers in order to utilize those well, correctly, and grab the student with those, so it's engaging for both.
Again, I think, no, I think that that's a good point. And when we look at those Fridays, the few times that we could offer staff support in how to leverage the camera in their instruction right now, when it comes in, as far as usability and plugging it in, it truly is a plug-and-play option. They plug it in the USB slot, and they're up and running, and there's very little to do with the camera, but it comes back to instruction. And they've been doing a phenomenal job now with a limited camera. So what they're doing with a limited camera should easily translate to something that's a broader field of view and increase their option. a broader field of view and increase their options, but that training we can bring to them on Fridays.
Lee, would you like to go ahead with your comment?
I would. I've got two or three questions. The first one is, obviously, we have some teachers that are medically compromised. If we go to Plan B, is there any, been any consideration of using them to be support, to move into a support position and to help accomplish the virtual and the mix within classroom? That's the first question.
Tamitha's on here. Tamitha, are you able to speak to that at all?
What I would tell you is that that would definitely be something that we would look to try to accomplish if that were to be a situation for an individual staff member. Sometimes licensure and what they can teach interferes with what we can assign them. However, we did look at that in a couple cases with regard to our wave program for staff who were needing to have a tighter confined space in terms of exposure. And so we were able to offer that option to a couple of teachers earlier in the year. We could certainly look at that again. I think the survey information about which families are going to want to stay virtual is going to be critical for us to determine what needs we actually can meet. So it's definitely a possibility we would consider.
Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, second question. Am I muted or not?
I am muted. You're good.
Okay. The second question is this, and I think this goes to Angie. One of the services that we have for the kids when they're in school has been mental health services in the classrooms. As a mental health provider, I'm really aware that to some degree, we're capable of doing that virtually, particularly with some of the older students and the ones that are more motivated. But it seems to me that without the in-person contact, that it's very unlikely that we're going to be doing much to help out the elementary kids or their families using any of those kinds of services. It's very difficult to do virtual play therapy with a first, second, or third grader. Can you talk to that a bit, with the mental health needs that we're seeing with the kids now or we're potentially going to see?
Can I go, Cassie?
Go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Lee. We are concerned about that. We are working with the consortium right now to come up with some different options for that. So it's not just here in our district that we're struggling with how those elementary kids will be seen by a provider that's all over, probably the United States, all over the world. But particularly in Marathon County, we're working with the consortium to come up with some options of doing some sort of classroom activities with all students. To talk in general to students, we obviously have an opt-out for parents to use if they don't want their child to participate in something like that. And that isn't something that is solidified yet, that is just an idea out on the table. We've also been talking about having students use classrooms or spaces within our buildings. The problem, again, comes in with those smaller children who need somebody to supervise them, but we can't have an adult in that room with them because of confidentiality concerns. So again, the consortium is looking at that and we're trying to come up with some options for those families and those young children who need that therapy.
Yeah, I'm very concerned of that because of the kind of things that we're seeing. And it, there's been a significant rise in the anxiety and the depression that we're seeing and the problems with the older kids. Some of them are very motivated and you can work with them, but it's very difficult to do it virtual and meet the needs of the elementary. Which brings me to the other, another question that I have for you, Keith. One of the presentations that we heard a little bit earlier were almost all related to problems that we're experiencing in the, at the elementary level. The kids' lives, whether it be technological, whether it be social, emotional, whether it be problems with families, whether it be problems with people in poverty. And one of the suggestions was that we consider going to Plan A with the elementary level and then perhaps staying with the virtual for the time being with the older kids that are more capable of handling that. And could you speak to that as a possibility, to do a workable compromise that would help meet the needs of those special ed and elementary kids more effectively by in-person? And even if we did have to eventually go back to see, that at least they would have developed personal relationships with the teacher?
Sure, I can do that. So the, you know, clearly, as everybody has said, we want students back in fully. The, I guess the reason for my recommendation is that under Plan B, we're still able to socially distance. And so as we think about the safety of the students, safety of the staff, and again, just our role in mitigating transmission, that's the reason for the recommendation to do Plan B across the board. Again, in Plan A, that there is no social distancing able to be done at the elementary level.
I appreciate that. I'm also concerned that what we're doing is we're looking at one element, but we're also looking at the possibility that if we don't start meeting some of those needs of the kids at that level, it's going to affect their education for the rest of their lives. We're looking at PTSD kind of issues and we've heard some really heartbreaking stories here. And I'm concerned that we're looking at one element, but we're not looking at the broader person that we're dealing with. So I would tend to be in favor of going to, taking that chance. And I know it's a big chance and I don't say that casually.
Can I add one thing? So if we are looking at going to Plan A, Lee, is that what you're saying?
I was saying for the elementary level.
Okay. So if we do not have any social distancing, we hesitate with that because then we will have what they call rolling quarantines. So if we have kids less than six feet apart from each other, we would have to quarantine entire classrooms or entire buildings. So that means even if we do bring all of those kids back, families are still going to struggle with having to take off of work because we are going to have to shut down entire classrooms or entire buildings for large periods of time. That's why with Plan B, where we can social distance, we have a better chance of keeping our buildings open for longer.
Yeah, thank you. And again, to your point, Lee, obviously a very important point. I think that is the value that, one of the main reasons we're recommending Plan B is that once students are in school in person for some period of time, we are better able to meet those social, emotional learning needs.
So I just want to comment on the concern with elementary students too. I mean, I share that concern. And one of the things that I thought was potentially worth exploring isn't even part of our plans, but if we had something for, and I think the teachers would have to be polled and to try and figure out which grades exactly, but just hypothetically kindergarten through second grade, how do we make sure that we don't add teacher workload? I like the suggestion, and I know the feedback had been teachers wanted consistent four days on and then with the other group under Plan B. But I really like the suggestion of the younger grades, if they were to come in, one group is Monday, Wednesday, they get their assignments for Tuesday, Thursday, so that there isn't that extra workload. And then the other group comes in Tuesday, Thursday, they still socially distance. And here's the thing, we have to keep in mind that the school day does not look like what the students are used to. And I feel like four days of that in a row, being in the same room, in your desk, eating lunch there, just not having those experiences that students are used to in the past, that's a lot, four days in a row. And, and though, you know, with the mask, I mean, I know we have to approve mask policy yet, but we did already go through that at Ops. Whereas if you kind of break that up a little bit, a day on, day off, the teacher workload is an increased, I mean, I do, I would be in favor of exploring that and I kind of, I know it wasn't part of the plans discussed or approved in July, but we are navigating an unknown and have to be open to new information and refinement. So I mean, I do share those concerns in trying to identify though what that would look like, since it's not in any of our current plans.
Lance, I see you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I mentioned my concern about the 50% not being sustainable from the teacher's standpoint. I just wanted to add, I brought it up before, but I don't think, or I'm not convinced in any way that our students are any safer in a 50% model than they are in a 100% model because of where many of the students are when they're not in school, which many of them are in group settings. Group settings now with different children than they would be if they were just in their classroom because they're at the Boys and Girls Club or a daycare or at a friend's house or at a relative's house. And that's just, you know, the COVID issues, not to mention all the other issues that we and others have discussed. And I also think that 50% at the elementary level at least still has all the problems with, you know, little kids trying to access technology and supervision. So even though I'm concerned with the severity of the quarantines, I think, I think Angie and Keith, you brought up really good points about, you know, why Plan B has such a great advantage in terms of quarantines. I don't think that outweighs all the other troubles with Plan B, at least at the elementary level. So at the elementary level, I would favor 100%. Or if the board majority doesn't support that for elementary level, I'd favor it for at least the youngest, you know, the K2 for secondary. I'm afraid that at 100%, we're looking at quarantines that shut down the classroom with the whole school. So that one, I'm not as comfortable with it, but I still have all those same concerns with the 50% model at secondary.
Jane, you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead and make a comment?
Our numbers are high. I don't want to pick and choose. The state says we're high, we're high. And we've had some spreader events recently, plus the colleges are quarantining their dorms. The kids are not staying there, they're going home. So we have kids that were in college, they were quarantined in their dorm, and they've come home and moved back in with their siblings that go to our schools. That's going to be a problem, and I think in a couple weeks, we're going to find out how big a problem that is. And just like Tricia said, I think, I think our parents are thinking school is going to be school like normal, no matter how we go back, 50% or 100%. And it's not going to look like that at all. I think we need to have a realistic description for them so that they understand what coming back to school is. But that said, I'm still not, I don't think we're ready to open. I think we have some events coming up that we're going to have another spike. And plus, I'm concerned, we have a pretty good percentage of people that think that this is a hoax. They don't mask when they should. I took my mother to the dentist this last week and a dad and his daughter, I guess about third grade, came in, neither one wore a mask. You think that little girl's going to be able to wear a mask in school? I don't know if she's ours or somewhere else. But if parents haven't taken this opportunity, I don't know if it's really an opportunity or it's time to get their kids used to wearing masks, setting an example. We're going to have a hard time with that.
Pat, I see you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead and make a comment?
Yeah, I'll do as quickly as I can, Cassie. So I mean, after listening to and reading all of the input over the last few months, I think we can all agree on a few items. The first of that, the first of those items being that all of the options have some element of risk. That risk can include social, emotional challenges, physical health, as well as student achievement and success. And those risks can impact, as everybody just pointed out, those risks can impact all students, staff, and the community. This is the world that we live in and, you know, our job is to balance all of those risks and make the best decision that we can, knowing that no decision is perfect. If we end up experiencing this mass COVID explosion that some have talked about and predicted and are forced to go virtually at some point down the road, we lose any opportunity for face-to-face contact with our kids in the foreseeable future. And I've heard a lot from folks, and I agree, right? We're one week into virtual learning this year, but when you put that on top of what we missed at the end of last year, we're quickly approaching a full semester outside of the classroom. And as everybody else has pointed out, you know, the speakers before, Mary, you know, talking about some of the most vulnerable, that, to me, that is a huge deal. So, so given all of this, I am going to offer or propose the following amendment to the motion that's on the floor. And I move that we provide the option to bring back elementary students K2-5, full-time beginning October 5th, 2020, and secondary students have that option to come back, assuming we don't have any mass outbreaks on October 19th, 2020, with all possible safety measures, including mandatory masks, sanitation stations, and social distancing to the greatest extent possible. This option should include a modified schedule that allows for proper cleaning and sanitizing at some point during the week.
I think so. We have a first.
Yeah, we already have a first and a second though.
Okay, Lee Webster's a second.
I'll second that.
So just to be clear, you don't want to treat that as a second option? So the original motion on the floor was to continue virtual with refinements. And...
I'll vote for amendment to that first motion.
I'll be up to Jane then.
Well, point of order, when we have to vote on President Zunkers' motion, and then if that fails, then we vote on Vice President's amendment to the motion?
No, it's the other way around.
Other way around?
We have to vote on the amendment, and then it goes to the original motion.
Okay.
So we vote on the amendment, and if that fails, then we vote on President Zunkers' motion?
Correct.
Is that all right to you?
No. Sorry. Let's just make sure we're all clear on this. There was a motion and a second. Doesn't Jane have to accept an amendment? And wouldn't Tricia have to second it, also approve it?
We haven't in the past.
Right. I think we've in the past voted on the amendment.
Different from my process. Okay.
I can't hear if there's...
No, we just want to make sure we're following correctly. And our understanding is that we would vote first on the amendment and then we'll go to the original motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Pat, can I ask a clarification? You mentioned modified schedule. Did you might elaborate on that a bit?
Well, I would, the administration should have the flexibility within that plan to modify a schedule, you know, if it's Monday, Tuesday. And this is just an example and I don't want to get into the weeds here because I know that there's way smarter people that can figure this stuff out. But if it's Monday, Tuesday, you have Wednesday for a cleaning and sanitizing day and they go back Thursday, Friday, maybe it's a half-day somewhere there. I don't know what's best, but I'm just offering that as a possibility. It could be for the... It could be for the PLCs, it could be for whatever. But I just wanted to make it clear that they would have that flexibility to implement how they best the stuff fit.
And I just want to say, while we still have some further discussion here since Pat's made this proposed amendment and it does have a second. I think we need some more information as far as which grades specifically. And I would support after this conclusion of this meeting and between now and the next one, having that data presented to us. Does it make sense to be K through 2? Is there encouragement for a different approach than what we currently have been discussing for the last few months? And determining at that time? So I believe that we do need some more support for elementary, but I think we need some more information on what that looks like at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess anything is possible with my motion right now since K through 5. That's what I'm proposing. That's the motion that we would have to vote on.
Okay, is there any further discussion or else is everybody prepared to vote on the amendment?
Can Cassie read it back?
And can, and.
Not verbatim.
Okay.
So Pat, were you proposing that five days a week?
Yeah, I'm proposing that we allow administration the flexibility to implement some type of cleaning and sanitizing schedule, time for teachers to re-prep in the middle of the week, whatever that may be. Because I think everybody's raised points or concerns around that. So I think we should acknowledge that is an issue and that there will be flexibility to address those things.
The kids might be going just two days out of the week is what you're saying? If they rest, they're clean between quarters or something?
Yeah.
Or they could be going five days a week?
We need information.
Or four?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wondering.
Yeah.
Excuse me, President Zucker, may I ask a petty question, please?
Please do.
Thank you. Pat, you referenced your amendment to include kindergarten through grade 5. Would you want to consider the addition of our 4K learners in that plan?
Yes. Good point.
Thank you.
So I'll put that to say pre-K through 5.
I have a question.
Hold on, hold on.
Would that include special ed kids?
Could Cassie, could you read the amendment to us back?
First.
I agree with you. So I agree with the amendment that we provide the option for elementary students K-2-5 to return to the schools full-time beginning October 5th, 2020. And secondary students, grade 6 through 12, have that option to come back face-to-face October 19th with all possible safety measures, including mandatory masks, sanitizing station and social distancing to the greatest extent possible. This option may include a modified schedule that allows for proper cleaning, sanitizing and at some point during the week.
How is this an amendment to the original motion? This is an entirely new motion.
Right.
That's what I'm sorry. So I don't think this is an amendment. If we were revising what we're doing under Plan C and looking into some creative options to supplement and to assist some of the grades, but this is a brand-new plan. So I don't see how this is an amendment at all. I think we have to vote on the original motion. And then if you want to make this brand-new motion.
Sure. If that's.
I just, I mean, am I misunderstanding? I don't see how this is an amendment to continuing on with Plan C with refinement.
Right, but the original agenda item talks about project relaunch. Administration had a motion out on the agenda. Then, or Jane's motion jumped to Plan C. So I'm hoping to make a new plan.
Right, no, that's fine. But we have this pending motion that was Plan C with refinement. We have to vote on that and see what happens and then I don't see how we can bypass the motion that we've been debating.
Because it is so different.
It's not an amendment. It's a totally different appro, it's completely different. If there was some modifications as it relates to more supports, bring in K-2 or something, but it's completely everybody in October 5th and pre-K through 5. And then that's, it's just a completely different motion, Pat.
So that is, but what you're, well, that's fine. I mean, but referring to Plan C is completely different than what administration brought.
Mine wasn't a recommendation, mine's not a motion.
Right, right. Well, Keith can't make a motion. So he just brought a recommendation and then in the course of our discussion, this board has the authority to deviate from that.
All right, oh, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Are people ready to vote on the first?
Okay, so I don't know if there's any further discussion. I think we can first vote on, well, vote on the first one and then we'll go from there.
That one might deserve being reread.
Do, yeah, why don't we?
I got it.
Okay. We're going to remind everybody what the original motion was. Hello, everyone. The original motion was to remain in.
Sorry, I wasn't clear. Go ahead.
To remain in C and refine and expand the hub and its services. And it was first by Jane Roush, second by Tricia Zunker. So I'm going to go through and do the roll call now. Calo?
Um, wait, I have a question before we begin voting. So then, point of order, so if, so if this motion passes, then obviously Vice President Keith's motion, it would be out of order, correct?
Correct. The amendment that came before, it's entirely different motion. It doesn't amend the first motion, so it really shouldn't be considered an amendment. So we're voting on the very first motion that came forth. And that was to remain in C and refine and expand the hub model and its services.
Okay.
And then mine would follow con?
No.
Should it fail?
Should this one fail, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, so my vote for this motion will be a yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
No.
Jane Roush?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
No.
Lee Webster?
No.
Jim Boucher?
No.
Tricia Zunker? Yes. It's 4 to 4, okay?
Motion failed.
Motion. So that is 4, yes. 4, no. Motion fails. I'm sorry, Beth, were you talking? May I just make a point of clarification? We find ourselves in a curious, I'm just making a point of clarification. We find ourselves in a curious situation because we are currently an eight-member board. So in the event that we are not able to have a majority vote tonight, then our original decision would have to stand.
All right, do you want to make your motion?
Pat, do you want to go ahead and say your motion one more time?
Sure.
I would, we provide an option to bring back elementary students pre-K through 5, including special ed, beginning October 5th, 2020. And secondary students 6 through 12, including special ed, have that option to come back October 19th, 2020 with all possible safety measures, including mandatory masks, sanitizing stations and social distancing to the greatest extent possible. This option may include a modified schedule that allows for cleaning, sanitizing, cleaning and sanitizing at some point during the week.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee, for seconding again.
I have questions to clarify.
Okay, we have some questions to clarify. Just one moment, please.
Hi, Pat, this is Angie.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of clarifying questions. First of all, would your option include giving parents the option to keep their kids virtual? And I can't hear you, Pat.
Yes.
Okay, and then the second question, Beth had asked about kids coming, kids coming two days and then having a day off and then kids coming two days. So this would not be cohorts, correct? This would be all pre-K through 5th grade students coming back all at once? And they would all come for four days a week, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for clarification, there is no safe social distancing under this proposed motion?
That's a false assumption.
There's no cohorts? It's all students brought back?
People can employ some form of social distancing. Washington East has 600 desks set up in the commons that are six feet apart. We can social distance during lunch. And if we want to get into the actual mechanics, then I think that's another separate meeting.
No, I just think we've gotten a lot of emails from teachers who've been very clear and described their own classrooms and how they can't save social distance under Plan B. And this is essentially Plan A with one day subtracted.
Understood.
If what we're doing is we're giving people, some people, the option of staying virtual, there will be some natural selection that will take place in that. So there certainly may well be the option for social distancing because given what we're hearing, the community is very polarized. It's almost a political situation and we should be able to accomplish some social distancing.
And we haven't really addressed the teacher workload also. So if we are going to have those virtual students and that still remains to be an issue, but okay.
And I have a further question. Would, will this still be visited on a monthly basis during our meetings then?
I would, I think that's a great question and something that I failed to mention. I mean, we have another meeting on the 28th, you know, before any of this would happen. And if we get data where we see the reality within our community that things are going so quickly relative to rates, infections, quarantines, I think that that option is always on the table, not only for scheduled meetings, but we can call a special meeting if it happens, you know, October 7th, 20, you know, whatever it may be. We have that right to manage that risk. So I agree with you. I think that's the way this would be treated.
I think we're going to have to continue to evaluate whatever the modality of operation or modality of instruction is until this pandemic is lifted, which it remains to be seen. But this notion that, oh, well, we're going to have another meeting in two weeks when families are going to scramble to now make changes once again, teachers are going to have to make adjustments, we asked them, we gave the preparation, starting with the decision July 27th. And this certainly wasn't on the agenda. And I think we would have heard from a lot more of the community that does not want to go to Plan A, minus one day. And I think that this is coming to the community. Sure, we've heard from one section of the community, but there is going to be a large number now that are going to be very upset as well. I guess the motion is on the table, but I would urge getting some data and looking at this further two weeks from now as opposed to making a decision tonight that is going to change course for everybody.
Go ahead, Beth.
I also wanted to say that one of the, we've heard lots of positive comments about the family conferences and how things go well for most people. Although some people had some problems. And I think part of the reason for that is we made a decision early at the end of July. So we gave teachers time to prepare and get ready, you know. If we switch things to something that's totally different, not any of the plans that we have right now, I don't think you can ask people. There's a learning curve there.
Cassie, can you do this?
Just one second. There you go.
The situation is this, we have a very polarized community and we're responsible to listen to both sides. I appreciate that we may hear some negative from another group. The reality is that we have been sitting in the middle of this for weeks and it's time for us to move ahead. And this is a workable compromise that I really believe that both sides will have some benefit from and some frustration with.
I think we have a responsibility to listen to expert science and the data and to suddenly now say, we're going to bring everybody back in the buildings in a few weeks. Or whether it's pre-K through 5 in three weeks and then a few weeks later in the secondary levels. That is not listening to science data or experts. So I think we're going to continue to have points on this. I think it's time to vote on this. We've got a first and a second. Okay, Calo?
No.
Beth Martin?
No.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roush?
No.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker? No.
No.
4, 4 failed. All right, that motion failed. 4, 4. We can continue to propose new motions. We can ask administration to bring back some more information. We could, it looks like.
We have a recommended motion.
We have a recommended motion also, but at this point, we have two failed motions.
Madam President?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a motion. And then probably another one after that if this one fails. So I would, I move that we implement Plan A starting October 5th just for the pre-K through 5th graders.
And what about, what about 612? Can you clarify?
Lance, can you clarify, does 612 stay on Plan C?
This motion doesn't address 612 at all. It just addresses pre-K through 5.
Okay.
So in effect, they would stay on C then?
Right, by default.
Okay, so that was Lance was the first, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Lee Webster's second. Okay, is there going to be any discussion on that one?
I think we've discussed enough.
But just how many have clarified? Everybody ready?
I think we've had a lot of discussions. We're just wondering if there was need for clarification, but I think we've been discussing all night. Okay, Calo?
No.
Beth Martin?
No.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roush?
No.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker? No.
No.
4, 4. That motion failed.
Okay, Madam President?
That motion fails 4, yes, 4, no.
I make a motion that we amend Pat's motion.
His motion failed.
Pat's making a motion that we implement the same motion that Pat made with children in preschool through K-3. in preschool through K3 and special ed.
Sorry, just a question. When you say special ed, just in K3 or K, or special ed K12? Just K3?
I think K3 to start with.
Okay, okay.
For K3, right?
I'm not sure why we're separating out special ed, that's all, because they would be
They already, special ed, special ed is already giving their services, so it's unclear. Okay, this is, this is becoming a service with these motions. It's, we have a situation where we have an eight-member board, and we can make motions all night, and it's probably going to come four-four. So at this point, Lee wants to modify a motion that Pat made that didn't pass, so it's got to be a brand-new motion from you, Lee.
That is so moved.
Just give me a second. Can you clarify that motion for the board, Lee?
Cassie, can you tell me what you have?
Okay, Lee's motion was to take Pat's amendment, except change it to be 4K through 3 with special ed services servicing 4K through 3 as well.
Okay, with the brand-new motion for, in the interest of precision, we need to have that language. We shouldn't cite back to a motion that didn't pass. So can you provide that language for clarity?
I need to depend on Cassie for that.
4K through 3, full-time, back October 5th.
And that would be it?
4K through 3, special ed, having secondary have the option of being face-to-face starting October 19th, with administrative flexibility and MAD scheduling to their discretion.
Okay, so Lee, you're asking instead of 4K through 5th grade, starting October 5th, to be 4K through 3rd grade, starting October 5th, essentially Plan A?
Yes.
Okay, and is that it? Or is there something for 4th grade through 12th grade?
They would, at the present time, they would continue with whatever modifications we're going to make if we make some decisions around going to be. But right now, I would say they're more capable of handling the virtual, the older they get, and this would take care of meeting the needs of many of the younger kids.
Okay, so we have a first, we need a second. So, just again, to be clear, this motion only covers 4K through grade 3?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that it's pretty, I think that it's pretty clear, we want to have more supports for our younger grades. Is this something, because now we're just picking grades. It was 4K through 5th, now we're just going down to 3rd. We've heard references, I made some to K through 2. Can we have some data provided to us at our Ed Ops meeting in two weeks, have a special meeting that night, and address elementary with some data and a recommendation that our administrators can bring to us?
We should do that, but then we're just moving things longer and longer and longer. And I think Pat's concerned about, we could, we could take this on until after the November election if we wanted, but let's, let's, he starts doing something.
Jane has something she'd like to say.
Okay, so Jane has something to say. Go ahead, Jane.
Are we operating under the misnomer that kids don't get COVID, or that it isn't deadly to them, or the other side effects that could be lifelong, damage heart, damage brain, damage blood vessels? I don't understand how we can pick a certain set of kids and say, bring them to school.
Well, yeah, this is Lance. I think Lee's motion has merit because, you know, four board members voted against K5, but it doesn't mean there isn't one board member who thinks that the needs of K2 or 3 in person are important enough to change their vote. I mean, you've heard the same stories that I have. We've gotten emails. You've heard from parents who are asking, how does their kindergarten who can't read follow along the virtual program while they're at daycare? They can't read. They can't tell time. So I don't know that it's going to pass, but I think it was worth exploring to see if, if the needs of the students who are the least successful with technology and with virtual learning, maybe it changes the vote of one person. I think it was certainly worth exploring.
Lance, we can certainly move forward with this. My question is, I share the concerns, but I would like to have more information from administration. What would that look like? And some, some more information on some surveying of the teachers and identifying grades specifically. We just randomly went from K, pre-K through 5, which that was modified through the course of discussion, to now pre-K through 3. Are those really the grades that should be identified? Is it pre-K through 2? Is 4 and 5, is that really something maybe we need more information on? So we can move forward with this motion, but I feel like we can direct administration that we would like more information on this and have an additional meeting two weeks from now, that we can take final action at that time, when we're more informed on those specific grade levels.
Yeah, I would be opposed to having more information at the next meeting if this vote passes, and I know that Airport fails. I know that oftentimes the elementary grades are, for whatever reason, are divided up, like K2 versus 35. It seems to be a more common division. I don't know if that would apply to this situation or not, but in the past, that seemed to be a more common division.
Do you need a second?
Am I phrasing up or is that Lance?
He froze up.
Okay. Lance, I think you froze up. In any event, I do think we should request more information. I mean, whatever, however, this, this motion is on the table, regardless of what happens, I think that we should request more information and have that at the meeting if we make it a special meeting that night as well, and can take action at that time. But this is just, it's too, there's too much unknown. I think we need more data on that. But okay, we have a motion by Lee.
Give me a second.
Give me a second.
I'll second it. Let's get, let's take the vote.
Okay, Calo?
No.
Beth Martin?
No.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche? Jane Roche?
You're muted, Jane.
No.
Thank you. Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Tricia Sunker?
No. The motion fails four, no, four yes. At this time, board members, we could make continued motions on that. I am proposing that we have a special meeting the same night as our Ed Ops meeting. We have more information brought to us, specific as it relates to elementary grades, and looking at what options would be available, a timeline, identify grades for coming back, whether that looks like some modification of Plan B or Plan A, but that gives the administration some time, and it'll be a special meeting so we can take action that night.
Tricia, just to clarify, administration will still continue with that survey this week?
I can, ready? Yes, we would, we have questions designed around both Plan A and Plan B, so we would, we might modify the survey just a bit based on the direction tonight, but yes, we would continue to do that. I have also been hearing some interest in surveying teachers. Is that an interest of the board?
Yes.
I see thumbs up.
And can I, can I talk again?
Yeah, you have to.
And just a question, is this just a simple yes or no, Plan A or Plan B, or are there some, did someone want to help me maybe make sure we get the right questions to inform the board's decision?
Keith, this is Lance. I think it's tricky. I support the survey, but I do think it's tricky, because if you just say Plan A or Plan B, they look at the materials for tonight, what does it say Plan B is, and what does it say Plan A is, and they vote based on that, as opposed to maybe a different version of Plan B. You know, so they, you may have a teacher who supports 50%, but thinks the current model of Plan B is not workable, and so they vote against it. I don't have an answer for you.
Thanks, Lance.
I don't know how to address that, but that's a big concern.
I would be supportive of including a section for suggestions. Our teachers are an amazing wealth of information. They're on the front lines of ideas. It doesn't mean that we can't incorporate all suggestions, and I'm sure you've been doing that all summer long, but again, we're not last summer. We are now in this, and if there is something that seems more workable than the proposed Plan B, I think we should at least, you know, be open to all possibilities, as we try to figure out what's best in this situation that we have found ourselves in. Okay, so does that, are there any other questions? The survey is going to go out. There will be more information. I think in the meantime, because of the board member composition, what this means is we continue on with the vote of July 27th. We will have a special meeting the same night as Ed Ops and be able to, or I think, can we just call it a special meeting and? We're having a special meeting anyway. Oh, gosh, that's going to be a long meeting already. I forgot.
I'm not sure if it's a special meeting. We have a meeting of the electorate.
Okay, so we'll address that into I know there's a special meeting. We'll address that in two weeks with the information. Is everybody comfortable with that? The motions have exhausted themselves at this point. I think we need to continue on and wait for that information that the administration will bring us. Okay, so now we are at, we have a lot of things to get through. Yeah, we're at Agenda Item 7A2, referendum planning update.
Yeah, I can take this, or Keith can. Am I, could we go?
Do you want me to make you present it?
Ah, no. Okay, this is verbal. Can you hear me out there? Beth? All right. We just wanted to let you know that we're in the midst of going out to the community and informing them with our information campaign, and we've said during the campaign, and will continue to say, our goal in all of this is to make 100% of the people aware of all the facts, and 100% of the people to come to the polls on November 3rd to vote. So we're just starting that. Last week, we were in front of the city council one night, a different night, we were in front of the Westies Neighborhood Group, and we'll continue to schedule meetings, and it'll be busy between now and November 3rd, and we'll try to see how close we can get to that goal. And that's the only update we have tonight.
All right, I don't have any questions. Does anybody have any questions for Bob or anybody else on this agenda item? Pat, Lance, Jim, I see you have your hands raised. Did you have questions about this?
No, I was thinking legit, I'm raising my hand.
Okay, thank you for lowering it. All right, I think we're good. Okay, thank you. So then, we're moving on to approving the list of legal firms. This is something that we, all of these things that we're going through actually have been addressed at the last meeting, the Education Operations Committee meeting. I'm seeking a motion to approve the attached list of law firms. The board and the district shall access for legal services deemed necessary by the superintendent of schools or his designee. Seeking a first and a second. Beth Martin is first, Lance Trollop is second. All right, we have a first from Beth Martin and a second from Lance Trollop. Okay, Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Tricia Sunker?
Yes.
Oh, 8-0, Pat. That motion passed 8-0. Thanks, everybody. All right, we are moving on to Agenda Item, what is this, 7?
7A4.
7A4, thank you, Bob. This is setting the annual meeting date and location, again, addressed at the last meeting. I'm seeking a motion to approve Monday, September 28th, 2020, as the date for the 2020, 2021 budget hearing and annual meeting. The meeting will be held at 6 o'clock in the auditorium at John Muir Middle School, beginning with the budget hearing, followed by the annual meeting.
Just a question. We're going to have a lot of people. I don't know if John Muir's big enough. Do we want to move to east?
Annual meeting.
I know, but this special meeting is going to have to be on the same night, same location. I don't want to go two locations.
Sure.
Do we just want to go east or west?
Well, we could do that.
Is that a problem in your, in your annual meeting?
We have to change our publication, which is going to go out very early in our morning.
And I'm sorry, folks, we're just talking about expecting larger crowds, and will John Muir have the capacity? So that's, that's what we're talking about while we're muted here, sorry.
It depends if we're going to have all the meetings that night in person. The annual meeting, there are reasons why we're not doing this for an annual meeting, because the public has to participate.
I think we should err on the side of a larger venue to ensure safe social distancing. Better to err on the side of caution than not. Okay, so I guess, is it going to be Wausau East or Wausau West?
There's probably more population on the west. Is that where we favor?
Depends on if the east auditorium, west auditorium.
Auditorium, west auditorium.
West auditorium.
West auditorium, okay. All right, everybody, I'm sorry, we're going to revise this motion. I'm seeking a motion to approve Monday, September 28th, 2020, as the date for the 2020, 2021 budget hearing and annual meeting. The meeting will be held at 6 o'clock in the Wausau West, did you say auditorium?
Auditorium.
Auditorium, in the Wausau West auditorium, beginning with the budget hearing, followed by the annual meeting. Okay, Jim Boucher is first. Okay, we have a first from Jim Boucher.
Jane.
Jane's second. And a second from Jane Roche. Okay, Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Tricia Sunker?
Yes, that motion passed 8-0. Okay, so we have a number of agenda items that go back to you, Bob.
Each one of these, we did talk about at the Education Operations Committee meeting, so it doesn't appear that we're giving a lot of time to this, but we did give a lot of time at the Education Operations Committee. So the, the action that's listed in Board Book prevails in every case, and the recommended motion was moved also and accepted at the Education Operations. So if we could just keep on going and ask for that motion, I don't have them in front of me right now.
Okay, we don't need to do anything on 5 and 6?
Don't have to do anything special, because nothing has changed.
Okay, and nothing with 5 and 6, because legal expenses?
Nope. Yeah, legal expenses and equalized values, there are reports there.
Okay.
No action taken.
All right, sounds good. So no action taken, 5 and 6, on to 7. I'm seeking a motion to approve preliminary 2020, 2021 general fund budget of $106,391,771 for expenses, and $105,233,129 for revenue, for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing on September 28th, 2020. Jim Boucher is first. We have a first from Jim Boucher. Beth Martin, second. And a second from Beth Martin. Okay, Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Tricia Sunker?
Yes, that motion passes 7 yes, one abstention. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. Again, information
Again, information that we did go over in the Ed Ops meeting recently. I, this is the recommendation for the 2020, 2021 tax levy. I am seeking a motion to approve the projected tax levy of $47,930,876 for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing on September 28th, 2020. Jane Roche is first, Lee Webster second. All right, I see a first from Jane Roche, a second from Lee Webster. All right, Lance Trollop?
Beth Stan.
Thank you. Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Trisha Sankar? Yes, that motion passes seven yes, one abstention. Okay, moving on to new business. Agenda Item 8A1, masking requirement. We did talk about this at the Education Operations Committee meeting with some suggestions, revisions for the proposed policy. Do you have any updates on that, Angie?
No.
Okay. All right, I didn't think so, but, all right, I am seeking approval of the masking requirement as presented. She, Beth Martin's one. All right, we have a first from Beth Martin. Seeking a second.
Is there a problem?
I don't know. All right, we have a first.
I'm certain Beth is talking, but I couldn't hear her.
I'm sorry, Beth, could you repeat yourself?
Did you hear Calo? She seconded.
Oh, no, I did that. Thank you. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, Lee Webster?
No.
Jim Boucher?
No.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
No.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Trisha Sankar? Yes. That motion passes five yes, three no. Okay, moving on, we have fall sports. I don't believe there's any updates, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion is seeking a motion to proceed forward with all fall sports as scheduled with any safety precautions administration deems necessary for athletes and spectators. The sport should also follow the athletic conference.
Trisha, I'm sorry, does the board realize that Wausau West volleyball and Wausau West cross-country teams are quarantined?
I don't think so. That's why I asked for updates.
I'm sorry, yeah, I couldn't remember if I had sent that or not. Let me, oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry, my fault. As far as updates, just so the board is aware, currently the Wausau West volleyball team and the Wausau West cross-country team are quarantined. But just so you know.
How many, I know, I don't know if our ADs are on, but approximately how many athletes is that in quarantine?
I don't know. I don't know, Dr. Rousher, if you're on or if one of the ADs are on. I know our cross-country team is large. But I don't know numbers.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I do not know exact numbers either.
Okay, so have a motion, is there a first and a second on that motion? I have a first from Lance Trollop.
Jim Boucher.
A second from Jim Boucher. Okay, Jim Boucher? Oh, I think Jane has a comment.
I'm sorry, Jane, go ahead.
I'm hearing from several different people that practices for these sports have gone back to just like every other year. Every caution's on being a team pick. I don't know if it's true or not because I haven't seen it, but I've had people tell me that. That's something we need to keep an eye on. But we'll have more teams than quarantine.
Yeah. Jane, just, I did speak to the ADs last week. They were very impressed with the mitigation measures that the teams were taking, last I heard.
And volleyball was due to an outside event.
Keith, this is Jennifer again.
Thank you.
I do not believe it is the full cross-country team. I believe it's under 10 students.
Thank you, that's good clarification. And Angie just reminded me too that the volleyball team was not quarantined because of school activities. It was an out-of-school event.
Do we have a first and a second on that?
We do.
Okay. It's gonna be a long meeting. Okay, Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
No.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Sankar?
Yes.
Seven one. Okay, that motion passed, seven yes, one no. Okay, next committee updates, board referrals, there are none. We are reaching the end of the meeting. We are on Agenda Item 10, Open Forum Legislative Liaison Update. Clerk Lowe, do you have an update for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, so then we are moving to Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. I don't know if anybody has anything to share tonight on that.
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Ka.
Okay. So my other elected official position is on County Board, and we had a special training on implicit and explicit bias. And I found it very informational. And, you know, it taught us a lot about the history of where our country began and how it began and where we are now currently. And so I found a lot of good information from that. And the one thing that really stands out to me is that in the current climate that we're in right now, Black Lives Matter doesn't mean that all other lives don't matter. So it was very eye-opening to a lot of the other elected officials that attended. It was the County Board and the Wausau City Council that attended, and I found it very valuable.
And I attended virtually as well, and I wish that the school board members had been invited. It was a very good program. I agree with Ka.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have, I have, I have.
All right, Lee's got something to share?
I participated in a webinar about organizational school and church suicide. That was, I thought was very, very informative because there was a substantial number of increases in, in suicide. And it did a lot, we spent a lot of time talking about some of the demographics, but more importantly, the importance of the schools district of having a very specific plan of how to act rather than react in a, in a situation where there is a suicide because you need to act almost immediately to take care of so many aspects of, and the number of people that are directly involved. So it was an excellent webinar, and I really appreciated the opportunity to do that.
All right, wonderful. Any other?
Jim has one.
All right, Jim?
A report from the WASB. We had our meeting this past weekend virtually, and the discussion was how are the regions going to have their banquets, which we have every year? And a letter will be sent out this week pertaining to the fact it will be virtual. The region meetings will be virtual along with most likely, it's not finalized, but most likely the conference in January as well. And once I get more information, I'll get that out to you so everybody knows what's going on.
Great, thanks, Jim. Anybody else, anything to share? Okay, Superintendent Commentary?
Just one item, one more correction on sports. I heard from someone close to the volleyball team, we are not all on quarantine. We are in pods, we are masked, and we are separated. So, kind of speaking to Jane's issue earlier, so thanks for the clarification. I'm gonna stop ad-libbing my, my updates. Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Dr. Hilt. Okay, Presiding Officer Commentary? First of all, I don't think there was anything in the, there wasn't any board member liaison, anything to report. Understandable, it is start of the school year now. If you haven't seen my email about board member liaison, what that requires, please do read that. Please do reach out to your principal for your assigned schools and also to try to connect with the PTO president. And also, if you're assigned an elementary school, might be an enrichment coordinator to connect with. And just as far as what kind of virtual events you can attend, just to kind of, again, be that liaison so that there is a little bit of board member presence and then to share as, you know, appropriate. There's still things that happen in the virtual environment. I know I'm attending a virtual PTO meeting tomorrow night, for instance. Speaking of liaisons, one thing that I'm doing, I've been working on with Dr. Hilt and Diana White, our Communications Director, is after some of the news about the referendum, we heard from a number of members from City Council that didn't really have full information. And it dawned on me that, you know, I think there's opportunity to improve relations as external partners with Wausau City Council, with County Board. Just making sure that we have, have good communication so that things maybe aren't heard to other parties secondhand with incorrect information and to try to kind of get ahead of those things. It's good for us to kind of be aware, still recognizing and respecting those sovereign local bodies, but still saying, hey, we want to be good external partners, we want to collaborate. So I have a meeting coming up with Mayor Rosenberg. I believe Keith is gonna be there and Diana White, our Communications Director, just to see what steps we can take. Maybe it's something as simple as having a board liaison to a committee for City Council, kind of like we did with Maripan County Board. But just starting that conversation to see, is there, I, I, I think there's always room to improve communications just generally, if we can get ahead of things and try to make sure that there's not misinformation and not lack of clarity, be good partners in the community. So I think that meeting's next Friday. I'll keep you posted on that. But just trying to develop that communication line a little bit better. And then secondly, the resolutions that we passed in Ju, in July have been submitted to WASB. Hopefully, they all make it out of the Policy Resolution Committee. A number of districts have signed on to co-sponsor one or all three. And I haven't kept everybody updated because it's kind of just, they've been coming at me. Some, some chose to go with, like Green Bay just chose the mascot, Madison chose all three. It really is symbolic really to co-sponsor. We don't need co-sponsors. So I think we'll see those full co-sponsors in, well, I guess, again, has to make it through Policy Resolution Committee. But other districts that support and have sponsored or co-sponsored, La Crosse, Sun Prairie, I think West Ellis, Milwaukee, they're getting back to me, but it's, it's been a number. But again, we don't need that. We, we can do the action on our own. It's just kind of nice to have that symbolic support. So that's with that. Last thing, talking about meeting protocol. We have been in virtual meetings since the pandemic hit. I stay connected with school board members from throughout the state to hear what they're doing. None of them have resumed to in-person meetings. Certainly, I would be concerned if we had in-person meetings and Keith's team was here and all of a sudden, we have a full administration in quarantine, running, you know, one of the largest districts in the state. So I think if we're going to talk about changing our meeting format, it has to still include virtual. I think that the modality of operation and how we meet would ideally correspond. We see that we can do public comment safely for individuals that want to attend. And we can figure out safe social distancing for if there are more board members that want to attend. I don't know that this is a policy vote so much. I think that people need to do what makes them comfortable. I think if there are board members that feel it's not safe, for whatever the reason is, you know, we continue the virtual option. And, you know, tonight, I think went very well, having public comment as we did. And I think we should just continue to follow how our learning environment is. Of course, if we have a blended model, it's, it's gonna be something. We can certainly put it on an agenda for a full vote, but that's, I, I do think the way that we did it tonight worked out well. Okay, we can continue those conversations, but probably not tonight. With that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn. We have a first from Beth Martin, a second from Lance Trollop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.